Welcome to the City Council's June 14 regular City Council meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. First, we would like to take roll call by introducing our staff and City Council members present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs, City Council Member Kat Carlton, City Council Member Betsy Nash, and City Council Member Ray Mueller. Staff present include our City Manager, Stala Jerome Robinson, our interim City Attorney, Cara Silver, and our City Clerk, Judy Heron. Ms. Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and members of the City Council. Again, welcome everyone who has joined us for this July 14 City Council meeting. At this time, we ask that the members of the City Council remain on screen, engaging their own microphones and webcams. Staff will engage their webcams and microphones for presentations, as well as to address any questions from the City Council. When it comes to the public comment portion, when the mayor calls for a public comment, members of the public can engage the hand feature in the top right side of your screen. That'll alert us that you have a public comment. We'll have the ability to open up your mic, and you may address the City Council. For all of those present, all web form public comment that has been received for this meeting has been posted to the agenda online, which is available to members of the public, as well as members of the City Council. And that concludes the instructions, and Mayor Taylor, you may continue the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up by public comment or other, excuse me, brought up under public comment, other than to provide general direction. At this time, Ms. Heron, do we have any public comments?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on this item C, which is general public comment, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. You will have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the City Council. So again, on the top right side of your screen, if you wish to speak, please engage that hand feature. And Mayor Taylor, I am seeing no hands raised. You may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item on the agenda, originally for item D1, is the study session to provide direction to select a Transportation Management Association model for further study. This item has been moved to our July 16 City Council meeting. Item C is this consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the City Council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a City Council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. At this time, Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So for members of the public, if you would like to speak on any item on the consent calendar, E1 through E7, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. We will have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can address the City Council. So again, this is public comment for the consent calendar, items E1 through E7. If you have a comment, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. And Mayor Taylor, I am seeing no hands raised. You may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Does anyone on council want to pull any item on the consent calendar? Councilmember Kat Carlton?
Four, five, and seven.
Are there any other items? Councilmember Nash?
Two, three, and six.
Oh, wow. Five items. So since E1 and E2 are left, does anyone on council want to go ahead and approve those two items? Councilmember Nash?
I'm sorry, I was, maybe I misspoke. I did want to pull E2.
Okay.
So actually, let me pull E2. E2 and E6. I will, I'll proceed with E3.
Okay, so do we have a motion on the floor to approve items 1 and 3?
Ms. Heron, I have a, actually have a question on E3.
Okay.
A question for staff. But I can wait until we do E2 first, since...
Okay, so as of now, the only item remaining is E1, the minutes. So do we want to do a motion and second to approve E1?
Councilmember Nash?
I was going to move to approve E1.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Sure, I'll second. Doesn't matter.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. And by a roll call vote to approve item E1, Councilmember Carlton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mueller? Councilmember Nash?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. So we'll start with Councilmember Nash for item E2.
Thank you. So item E2 is to adopt the resolution notifying the PLS, Peninsula Library System Joint Powers Authority, of our intent to withdraw effective July 1, 2021. And in the report, it says that staff is planning to, at, for City Council's direction, staff is going to go out with an RFP for an Integrated Library System Platform and interlibrary loan delivery service, and then return to council with recommendations. And I'm wondering what the benefit is of withdrawing now as opposed to in December, which still gives us the mandatory six months.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Great question, Councilmember. The advantage being that council can express its intent to issue the RFP and improve the city's negotiating position and leverage in evaluating that RFP and negotiating with the vendor that the council selects, because then we wouldn't have an existing relationship going on with the PLS at that time. Of course, it would still be happening, but they would have been put on notice at that time prior to the RFP, so definitely would add significant leverage there, with the goal, of course, being to find the most cost-effective, best solution for the community of Menlo Park.
Do you believe that there's any downside? Or do you anticipate that there will be any downside to doing that notification early when we are going out for the RFP? And I believe, according to the report, that PLS was probably going to be one of the alternatives that would be evaluated.
No, I think there's some significant advantages, not only for the city, but also for PLS itself and the other member libraries, because it just gives that much additional notice of, you know, the city's intention and that, you know, when an RFP is issued, they've had that much more time to just sort of be prepared for it and respond to it if they so choose.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so it's occurred to me on the side of, Mr. Reinhardt, sorry to lose you. It's occurred to me on the side of that it is a joint powers authority, and I'm wondering if we've made any attempt to negotiate with the Joint Powers Authority or actually bringing the issue, or the issue that we've sort of discovered and discussed through our budget process with them yet. Because it seems to me that there is some ability to do so with the public agency and say to them, hey, we don't think this is quite the equitable relationship that perhaps, and we are going to pull out if it's not fixed.
Yes, we have been having that conversation. The Administrative Council of that JPA is comprised of the library directors of the various jurisdictions, so I myself am a member of that group. And we have had those conversations. And at this time, it seems that we would be well advised to just sort of look at what the other options are out there, so that we can sort of make the best decision. By we, I really mean the city, as directed by the City Council.
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. Are there any other cities that are contemplating the same action? And if not, do you have, do you understand why not? Since presumably, everybody's in similar budget situation.
Well, a couple things. One is that the Community College District was a full member for some years, and last year, they did elect to withdraw. For the most part, they remain kind of a member in name only, but they materially withdrew as far as the Integrated Library System Platform. Regarding like the other cities and their financial conditions, I think that that does actually vary quite a bit among the jurisdictions right now, because they do have sort of a different revenue base from Menlo Park, Menlo Park. I think that's been discussed in the budget process, that we are in a little bit of a different financial boat than some of the other cities.
So as our library director, you are recommending that we proceed with this resolution to withdraw effective July next year?
I am, and I don't do that lightly. I make this recommendation because I think it's in the best interests of the city, just like we would do with any other vendor and any other service of this nature, just to take it through a fair and open a public bidding process like we would with any other system like this. So that's the basis of this recommendation. And, you know, again, I don't do it lightly, but I do think the circumstances sort of really kind of call for that recommendation at this time.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so I supported this in the budget process when we were going through it, based on our recommendation, thinking it would be effective immediately. But given that it's not going to be effective for a year, and only need the six months, I actually do, I actually would like to have, I think, at an elected level, some elected-to-elected discussions of those who are in the Peninsula Library System to talk about this matter with them. I think it's a, it's sort of a professional courtesy that I know, I don't believe we've engaged in at a city level yet with those other electeds. I appreciate that you've done so, Mr. Reinhardt, at that staff level, at the professional staff level, but I do suggest there is some time. I do think that when there's a problem like this, and you have a little bit of lead time, sometimes we can assist our professional staff members in having some discussions with those other cities and to try to figure out how to make this work. And if we can do so in a way, we might end up, we might end up making it cheaper overall and a more, or a more competitive bid process by getting, by getting some mandate from those elected officials down into, to the Peninsula Library, JPA, and then getting that best deal possible. Then if we're still not happy with it, going and talking with those vendors. So I actually, I appreciate that Councilmember Nash raised this, and I actually would be amenable to putting it over a couple months for those, for that outreach to take place to those, to those electeds and those other cities who are part of the JPA, just to give them a heads up that this is coming. And that's, and that's not, that's not in any way meant to, to not take into your professional weight and wisdom, Mr. Reinhardt. On our side, we have, we have our courtesies and responsibilities we really need to do with electeds throughout the region. I hope that's understandable. And that's what, that's what I presented to my colleagues.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yeah, I think this is like the third time we've had this conversation, if not the fourth. And I think I understood pretty thoroughly what Mr. Reinhardt was suggesting and why. My, I think the only question I haven't asked is, if we resign now and something shocking happens between now and December, April, do we have the ability to change our mind? Or once we say we're pulling out, that's it, we're pulling out?
Thank you for that question. That's a great question. Also, thank you for your comments, Councilmember Mueller. But to Councilmember Carlton's question, yeah, the timing is sort of a consideration. We certainly can rescind, you know, the notification before January 1st, certainly if not later. The Peninsula Library System wouldn't, I don't think they would make any particular preparations before January 1st. I do think the timing of engaging an elected-level discussion in the midst of everything else that's going on, bringing something back to council in time to issue the RFP, kind of go through that process, which can take 60 to 90 days sometimes, and get all that done before the end of the calendar year, which is when the six-month notification would then need to occur by council action, could be a little difficult. It may be more efficient and easier to meet those timeframes. If the notice was issued now, just check that off the list, because it can be rescinded later. And that way, you don't have, you know, that time crunch to engage in some of those other activities.
Okay, so what I hear you saying is, in your professional opinion, it really needs to be done now to put us in the best position with the best information and the best ability to move forward by the end of the year. So for that reason, I'm in support of this. I trust your opinion.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I'm also in favor of moving forward with the resolution. If I recall, and one of the number of other times we discussed about this, the elements to remove yourself, or for a city to no longer be a part of this, this Joint Powers Authority is pretty sort of onerous, right? There's like this specific noticing provision, and you have to be in it for so long, and it has to be a council resolution. And so, you know, from my perspective, supporting this doesn't sort of cast the die and mean that we're going down a path of which is irrevocable. But, but the JPA has, through its own sort of provisions, made removing oneself, or intentionally removing themselves from it, pretty difficult. And so, based on that, my, you know, my sense is that I don't think we owe anyone anything other than to follow the rules outlined in the documents that govern the JPA, given that they've made them so onerous, or I think so. And so, in that sense, again, I'm, I'm supportive of moving forward. And, you know, that opens up the possibility that at some point down the line, we might conclude that staying with, within this, this library system is the best, is the best decision for, you know, for the city and for the residents. But, but again, given this process and its intricacies, I think it's best to begin now.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
I'd like to hear from Councilmember Mueller a little bit more. I think that it's a prudent measure to actually go to the other elected officials. And I'm wondering, assuming that he might be the person doing that, how much time you think you would need? And whether, you know, perhaps we could do that and still meet these timelines? Or what's, what are your thoughts at this point?
So I think I could probably get to all the elected, I think I could get to all the cities in two weeks' time. The issue would be whether or not those elected officials on the JPA would feel like they need to go back and talk to their councils before doing something at the JPA and how much time that would take. But I think we could rapidly, I mean, honestly, I could probably reach all of those elected officials before the end of the week. But giving them that courtesy, but, but I think that's also important, because they'll also find out if there is an appetite for any sort of reform to the JPA to address the issues that we have or not from an elected level. And so what I would say I'd do after this meeting is I'd go down, first sit down with Mr. Reinhardt, talk about what the discussion's been with professional staff members, get a very clear understanding of that, so that I have a very good ability to brief those other elected officials when I talk to them, find out from them if there's any, if there's any ability for them, or if there's, if they are concerned, if there's any ability for movement to JPA with what our issues have, or if so, I'd come back and report to you that was the case. If not, I'd come back and report to you, we're not going to get any support at the elected level. Let's go ahead and forward. But we would have taken that courtesy to try to do that. And my experience and, you know, counsel has been that typically when you're in a joint powers agency or a relationship with another agency, and you make a, you make a statement that you're trying to sort of review that other agency's work or withdraw from it, it sort of puts you off at a communication loggerhead sometimes, which where people kind of have hurt feelings, miscommunications. People kind of dig in, like, what are you doing? So this is just a chance. But granted, if people don't want to, if the council doesn't want to do that, and they just want to move forward, I respect that. I just think we have a little bit of time, a little bit of time here for some diplomacy around this, so.
Vice Mayor Combs?
As I see it, what Councilmember is, Councilmember Mueller is proposing and adopting this resolution aren't mutually exclusive, right? We can adopt the resolution, and, and Councilmember Mueller can, can sort of engage other, other elected officials around, around the county who are part of this JPA. And last year, you're saying that like by adopting a resolution, that would somehow like, you know, prevent other, other members of the JPA or make them unwilling to chat with us, or to talk. But, but in theory, I don't see that they're, again, like, those, those two efforts being mutually exclusive. But Mr. Reinhardt, can you correct me if he has a different understanding?
Mr. Reinhardt?
No, I think Councilmember, I mean Vice Mayor Combs, absolutely correct. I do think Councilmember Mueller's suggestion and Councilmember Nash's comments also are totally well-taken. I do think they, providing the notification this far in advance is a clear indicator that we do want to have that conversation. We do value those other partners, and that we do want to undertake, you know, this discussion and examination in a fulsome manner. I do, at least I can't speak to, you know, the elected official level and the relationships there, but I do know at the administrative council level of this JPA, with the other library directors that comprise its board, relations are very positive. You know, we're very collaborative. And at least at that level, this notification, I think, would be taken as a sign that we're given as much advanced notice that we're looking at this closely, and we'd like to talk with you about it, because there's a lot of time to go through it and then rescind it, you know, if that's what our decision is. So I think both can be done, but of course, it's whatever the council directs us to do. The path will go.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Councilmember Carlton?
Yeah, I think that not only can they be done at the same time, but they should be, because Ms. Reinhardt's made it really clear that it puts it as a disadvantage delaying this, delaying this decision. And I'd be interested to see what changes could be made that would make it, because it seems that there's a structural problem, not a, it's not low-hanging fruit that's going to fix this problem. But you never know what can be negotiated. So I'm open to hearing what can be negotiated, but I think Reinhardt's made it very clear that we need to make this decision now. And in the interest of not spending too much time on this, because we have a bunch of other consent calendar items before we even get to the meat of the meeting, I suggest we move to the vote on this, unless someone has something specific. Thank you. I'm happy to make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Mueller?
Respectfully, I will, all due respect to Mr. Reinhardt. I didn't hear him say, actually, the words that you did, Kat, that it would put it as disadvantage. It sounded like it would be, timing-wise, it would be, it would obviously help us to be able to do it now, but it doesn't put us at disadvantage to do it later, because we have the time to do it later. And the reason, the analogous comparison I would make is that if I was in litigation against someone, and I was trying to settle something with them, and I had a dispute about a contract, or I, something that was going to be at issue that was going to cause me to withdraw from that relationship, typically what a court would want to see would be a meet and confer, something that said in good faith, I met with someone before taking an affirmative action to go ahead and seek a remedy. Or, and so you would sit down and say, you know, you'd sit down and say, I met with them, I discussed this with them, and we went over the issues, and then we took action. In this circumstance, while that certainly sounds like it's taken place at the professional staff level, it has not taken place at the elected official level. There's been no meet and confer with the other elected officials or the other cities who are part of the JPA. And that's why my suggestion is, even though that those things could go ahead and act at the same time, one's not mutually exclusive with the other, the courtesy of sitting down and talking with someone also puts them on notice that you're doing something in good faith. It's not like, oh, I'm going to have this. When you, sometimes when you say to someone, well, I've written you the letter, I've started the process, but I'll talk to you about it now, the thought in their back of their mind is, well, you've already started the process, like, and now you're going to come and talk to me about it? And it sort of sets the discussion, the negotiation off at a, they, there's a wonder if it's a fait accompli. So I, I did not hear from Mr. Reinhardt that this would actually be something that would be disadvantageous to us in this process. What I heard was that, and candidly, Mr. Reinhardt, what I heard you say was that if we did this now, we would go, the timing for going ahead and starting to put together are the, are the RFP, because there's a certain number of steps may be affected. But I would suggest that mutually, that actually starting to do all that work now is not mutually exclusive with sending this letter. We could actually do that work while we did this and make it for the six months. Because what's really the underlying, underlying fact-based or dependent-based logic in that is that somehow a person won't apply to the RFP if we haven't sent this letter yet, which is factually not correct. As a matter of fact, with the number of discussions we have, meet and confer that were taking place, we may actually be in a better position, someone responding to the RFP, thinking if I give them a really good deal, they'll actually go ahead and pull the trigger on this. So with all due respect, I'm, I will be voting no on this. I think we should go ahead and at least await, wait, I would say, six weeks before starting this withdrawal. Thank you.
Okay, I move to pass.
I second.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
That's okay. That's okay.
I take back my second.
That's okay. Mr. Reinhardt slowly is raising his hand.
First of all, I just, I'm aware of the time, and I really am so grateful for the level of discussion on this issue, which is really close to, you know, my work. One, one possibility here could be to direct staff to include a cover letter with the notification, you know, of all the points that have been raised here about, you know, a desire to engage in a discussion about some of these systemic questions that we have, and a desire to hopefully find, you know, to engage with at the elected level between, you know, those governing bodies as well. But in the interest of time and because of the onerous requirements of the JPA agreement itself, which requires such advanced notice, that we're taking this particular step just to make sure that we don't find ourselves in a timing crunch, but adding that cover letter could potentially satisfy some of that desire, which I think is well-placed, and that's what I wanted to suggest.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. And I, just thinking about how much staff time we've already put into this, the fact is, this is something important to everyone on the council, which I really appreciate. I didn't like seeing it on the list to be cut, but after the continued explanation from Mr. Reinhardt about what this service provides and what we already do as a city through our library services, I like Councilmember Mueller's suggestion as far as having a discussion with the elected officials. However, I don't want to spend another four hours on this item, because I believe we already have as a council, because we discussed it in other places. So I'm trying to figure out what the middle ground is here. Is that just pulling the item you have in a discussion? Councilmember Mueller, if you're willing to have that discussion, that'll take you a couple weeks, and bringing it back mid-August? And we would still meet that timeline, Mr. Reinhardt? Is that doable? Because I don't think that we need to send a cover letter to the JPA. I think this is a conversation both Councilmember Mueller and Councilmember Nash wanted to have with other electeds. So I don't necessarily believe that we need to send a letter to do that, that it's just a verbal conversation, a few phone calls, a few Zoom calls, however you choose, Councilmember Mueller. So does it best just to pull it? Because at this point, I would vote, and I know that there's a, there's a motion on the floor from Councilmember Carlton and Vice Mayor Combs, but honestly, I would vote no.
Yeah, my, so my, what my, if this motion fails, what I would, what I, my, my, my motion then would be that we go ahead and, and move it to a date, certain meeting in August, and bring it back then to allow time for us to go ahead and do the outreach to the electeds in the cities that are part of this JPA. And then we can go and report back.
Councilmember Carlton?
I don't see why we can't make the decision now, have the conversations. If anything changes, then bring it back, rather than having this come back again for us to discuss again. It would be very easy for us to deal with this now. If, have the conversations. If anything changes, fantastic, then bring it back. But there's no reason to keep it coming back and coming back. That they can, we've said it can be done simultaneously easily.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, so I know we've already spent a lot of time talking about this. So very much if, if it doesn't seem like that there is support for the motion that Councilmember Carlton made, then I am certainly open to letting another member of the council make a motion, saying something differently. But just to be clear, I wouldn't support a motion other than one to adopt the resolution because this is about a contract that the city is a party to. And for me, the responsibility is, is to make sure that the city is in the best contractual position going forward with regards to its relationship with the JPA. And if in the future, this looks like it is a contractual relationship that we possibly want to end, I don't see how from a contract perspective, it is any, is in any way advantageous to the city to delay this, this decision. I remember when we discussed this before, one of the things that staff brought to us was this possibility of delaying bringing this, 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 this resolution to the council. I specifically supported bringing it as early as possible because of these different provisions as, as part of the, the JPA, you know, the, the, the JPA's agreement. And that I thought, again, it was putting the, the city in the best contractual position. And I haven't seen any argument in, 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 you know, sort of contrary to that. But that being said, if there are three votes for something else, then let's proceed with those three votes. I'm, I'm more than happy to lose on this issue and move, move on than to sort of, you know, sort of, you know, drag it out when it, when it's clear where the consensus is.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Mueller?
Should we ask the city attorney whether or not we're contractually put in a worse position? Because I believe we have a year to go ahead and do this and that a month won't delay our ability for to do that. And the reason why Councilmember Combs, I don't think it does put us in a contractually worse position is because, as you know, contracts have to do with collecting the intent of the parties. And if we are looking for innovation to that contract, as opposed to just ending that contract, setting up that discussion with the other parties to go ahead and sit down and talk about that contract before we actually go ahead and end it, and delaying that only one month, still providing us 11 months to execute it, I don't think really puts us in a position where we are materially affected. But if, if the city attorney wants to correct me in that, I'd be happy to hear her opinion.
Vice Mayor Combs?
But, but I would just say, I'm pretty sure that, that, yeah, it's, it's not putting the city in a materially disadvantage. But I'm saying to what advantage? That there's some hurt feelings in, in San Carlos or San Mateo? I don't, that, that's not my, my priority. In our engagement with this JPA previously, they made it clear that they were going to make sure that we adhere to every provision that was stipulated as, as, as part of no longer being a part of the JPA. And so my concern is like, let's give ourselves as much time as possible, because it's clear that they, they, they were not supportive of, of letting us lead the, the, the JPA in anything other than a manner in which they were going to make sure that all the i's were dotted and all the t's were crossed. And so my sense is that like, let's give ourselves as much time as possible when that's the other side of the party we're, we're dealing with. And if the, the possible downside is that, you know, someone, you know, on the Redwood City Council feel that, that, that I didn't give them the heads up and their feelings are hurt, then, then that's, that's a risk that I'm willing to take. But again, that's my perspective, you know, so I'm, I'm totally comfortable if the, the consensus of, of a majority of members of the council is, is something different.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Mueller?
That's fine. We can go and proceed with the vote. But my perspective and I respect yours, Councilmember Combs, is just that in a contract negotiation, feelings are facts. The way someone feels about how not going to negotiate is taking place is a fact you have to deal with in that contract negotiation. And that can happen whether or not you're dealing with the JPA or with the union or with fellow council member. Feelings are facts in a negotiation. So I don't know if we need, actually, it's up to you if we need the city attorney's opinion or not, or we can just go ahead and move the vote. But it's fine.
I'm happy with letting the city attorney chime in. We, we made her come on. We might as well hear it from her.
Yes.
I don't know if I've touched this one. I think these are really policy decisions in terms of whether the informing and having a dialogue with the electeds is, is a significant step and an important step to negotiations. The one thing that I will point out is that the, the contract is structured and the JPA is structured so that the decision maker in terms of the contract is actually the administrative council, which is made up of library directors. And so it's not clear to me how active other electeds have been monitoring this particular contract. It certainly came to our attention because of the budget issue and because the library director, it brought it to the council's attention, but it may not have risen to that level in other, in the other cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Okay, are we staying with the same motion or is there a new motion on the floor?
So Mayor Taylor, we already have the motion and second to adopt the resolution, so we will need to take a vote on that. I have a motion by Councilmember Carlton and a second by Vice Mayor Combs.
I think Councilmember Carlton had to follow.
Through the mayor, I, I have a question of my, my secondor. You said that you would feel more comfortable if the motion was worded differently. How would you suggest wording it? Or do you think it's best? What were your, what were your thoughts on that?
Well, initially I was, oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Wait, who's the secondor? Am I the secondor? I, I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah. No, I, I have, I have no, no issues with the wording. My, my only thing, I, I mean, I think we have to go through this process now. Is it like, I just only think that there's two votes for this motion. And so I would prefer to rescind it and let's, let's proceed with a motion where there seems to be more support. But if Judy is saying that we have to go through with this, this motion, then, then let's go, go through with it. And I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the wording. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't change anything. Either way, I think that there's only two votes here. So let's, let's.
Cecilia, is there anything that, that would, would make it more palatable for you? Or are you?
Well, what I was going to say earlier is that if this is just about having a conversation of what the other elected officials, then that can be a part of the motion.
Well, that, I thought that was, that, that I agreed to support this with the understanding that we, it would simultaneously continue with negotiations and meetings to see if something can be done to make the agreement something that was more beneficial to middle part.
And I remember hearing Vice Mayor Combs saying that he would support it as it is. And if someone else wanted to put another motion on the table with the verbiage that they wanted. So.
That's my verbiage saying that we can do both. And Drew, are you okay with that?
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that, but I, I think in deference to Councilmember Mueller, who is, who is the one proposing and would conduct this outreach, I, I do think it should be framed in a way that he is most comfortable with, right? And if he feels that it being framed in addition with this adoption of the resolution, I, I, I would respect that. Like, again, if he's going out and having those conversations and he's saying, I don't want to go out and have them after this, then I could, I could certainly respect that. But I'm okay with that language. I, I totally am fine if, if you want to add that language.
I, I don't understand how it, in fact, I think it actually helps to, to be able to say, look, my council's really serious about this. Let's set down, sit down and have a very sincere conversation, having, having been one to, to have uncomfortable negotiations in the past.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, you don't have to worry, Councilmember Combs. Like, if you guys decide that you just want to do it now and want me to go talk to them after having done it, that's fine. Like, that's okay. I, I'll, I'll be comfortable having the conversation with them afterwards. I respect, I'll respect the opinion of the council. So it's all great.
But we don't want to undermine you.
Do not. I mean, I, you know, I, I personally think we'd be in a better position to do it before. But if the, if the collective body, you know, disagrees, that wants to go a different way, I'll, I'll talk to them after the fact. It's fine.
Welcome back, Ms. Heron. Councilmember Nash?
Ms. Heron, please stop me if this is inappropriate. But Councilmember Mueller, I'm now totally confused. I am in favor of having you speak with other electeds. I thought that we wanted to do that prior to, for courtesy, prior to resolution to withdraw, which to me made sense as that is how I would like to be approached. Are you, what is your position since you are going to be speaking with others now? I was bluntly, I was planning to vote against this, but if you're voting for it, then I'm trying to figure this out.
It'll pass.
No, I'm, I'm, so, I'm voting against it. But what I'm saying is, if it passes with the amendment that, that Mayor Taylor has discussed with Councilmember Carlton and Combs, I'm, I will, I, I'll respect the, our body and go out and, and talk to the other electeds after the fact, upon effect.
Okay, so with that, I believe that the motion on the floor by Councilmember Carlton with a second by Vice Mayor Combs is to adopt Resolution 6573 and direct City Councilmember Mueller to have the further discussions with the electeds of the JPA. Okay, so by roll call vote, Councilmember Carlton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mueller?
Sorry, I muted myself. My vote is no.
Councilmember Nash?
No.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
I'm comfortable with it, yes.
And the motion passes with City Councilmembers Nash and Mueller dissenting. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have finally gotten to item E3. Now I'll try to make this quick. I have a, a couple of questions and I'm not sure if this is for our city attorney, our interim city attorney, Ms. Kara Silver, and, and that is about the ballot measures. I believe we voted for another ballot measure, I want to say a couple of weeks ago, but maybe I am crossing staff reports. So how many, how many items do we have going on this, on the 2020 ballot?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Yes, you are absolutely correct. You did vote for another election resolution, and that was to call the general municipal election to elect the two new council members from districts three and five.
That's right. Thank you. And then my other question is, are we, do we pay per item on ballot? Or are we the, both items, this one and the one for district three and five, were all cost the same amount, which is the $34,000 to $41,000?
So that is a question for the city clerk.
Okay.
Judy, I will release my camera so you can hopefully respond.
Oh. Thank you so much. So the cost that you see in this evening's staff report is just for the ballot measure. The previous cost for the other resolution calling the candidate election, that was the cost just for the candidate election.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
My pleasure.
So, you're welcome. So my concern here is, is one, I don't believe that the hotel has broken ground. So I don't believe it's going to be completed in 2021. I think that this could actually wait until 2020, 2022 ballot measure. And then also just looking at the savings versus how much we're actually going to spend to get it on the ballot. To me, it, financially, it just doesn't, to me, it's not worth it financially. So, Councilmember Carlton?
Sure. I actually called someone on this because I wasn't sure what it was. And the background history I was given is that Facebook has already agreed to pay the additional TOT. That was part of the development agreement that they had agreed to some time ago. And legally, they can't just decide to pay it. Legally, it still has to be approved by the voters. Funnily enough, even if they volunteer to pay it, it still has to be approved by the voters. And so if this doesn't go through, it will impact the development agreement. It will still impact a lot of staff time to be able to, to go back and, and figure out how to compensate for that. Which is why I felt comfortable with it going through now. Now, whether or not financially it's more advantageous to do it this year or next year, I, I don't know. But it, I was surprised to find out that historically somehow they had agreed to do it as part of the DA. I see Kara's popped up, so please go ahead. That, that's what I was told by Fergus at Facebook when I asked him what was going on with it.
So general tax ballot measures can only appear in even numbered years, so every two years. So the next time for this to come up would be 2022. So we're really dealing with the time period between 2021, when, where we think that the hotel is going to be built, and 2022. The mayor's correct that, that that seems very ambitious, that a construction schedule to bring a hotel online in, in, you know, a year. There is an incentive for the hotel operator to come online early because under the development agreement, there is the TOT guarantee. And so Facebook presumably is requiring the hotel operator to come online by a certain time so that their guarantee would, would not be invoked essentially.
Not sure who had their hand up first, if it was Councilmember Nash or Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. So the way I read the development agreement, the guarantee actually takes place such that if you, if the hotel does not make a certain amount, then Facebook actually, well, actually, the TOT is paid not by Facebook, but by guests, is my understanding. So this is actually the ability and the, our TOT is currently at 12%. This is actually allowing an additional percent to be added to the TOT, which is paid by the hotel guests. If, for whatever reason, there's, because of, there are not enough, basically, if the TOT is not at a certain level, which I believe is, actually, I'm not seeing it immediately in the development agreement. But if it's not at a certain, if it does not generate a certain amount of money for the city, then the TOT guarantee kicks in. And actually, Facebook is, I believe, responsible for the difference between whatever the TOT, whatever the hotel generates in TOT and whatever amount has been in the agreement. So I don't think they replace each other. I think that the TOT guarantee payments actually augment whatever the TOT is by the hotel up to a certain point that's agreed to. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So how does this, I guess my question is, how does, if we do not have, if we do not put this on the ballot, or if it does not pass, how does that affect the guarantee payment? if we do not put this on the ballot or if it does not pass, how does that affect the guarantee payment?
Uh, yeah, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, um, impact the guarantee payments. The guarantee would still be, um, in effect. And they would, i- if the hotel did not come online or if the hotel didn't make the, the benchmark payment, Facebook would still be required to pay the, um, the guarantee amount. Of course, the guarantee amount is less than, um, the full amount that we would expect, uh, if the hotel did come online. Because number one, there are more rooms than, um, were calculated in the guarantee. And also if the one percent is approved, the tax rate itself would be higher. But to, to answer your question, if, if we did not pass, if, if the council decided not to put this ballot measure, um, on, on the ballot this year, there still could be a potential that the guarantee, um, could be invoked, um, to, to s- secure payment up to the guarantee amount if the hotel did not, um, come online or if the hotel came online and didn't earn the, the income guaranteed by the, uh, development agreement.
And when does the guarantee, um, when do the guarantee payments start? I believe it, um, says it's the second full city fiscal year following the TE vacation date. So do you know when that is?
Yeah, I believe it's July twenty twenty-one. Let me see here. Yes, the, uh, the guarantee is one point two five effective July one, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. And I'm going to move on to councilmember Mueller.
I was just going to say, I'm going to support, uh, the mayor's logic here, uh, on this supporter position on it. So I think we can do this in twenty twenty-two, and I don't think, uh, I think the forty thousand dollars is something that can be saved on this election. So I really don't believe that they're going to be, have this hotel completed before then. And actually, in the current economic climate, I'm a little afraid that people will vote against the measure. Cause, uh, it's not a great time for people to be thinking about raising taxes. So I will be, uh, for, for those reasons, I'm going to support, uh, the mayor's, uh, position.
Thank you, councilmember Mueller. Vice Mayor Combs.
Um, I may have missed this in, in the staff report. So would it be cheaper if this were on the ballot in twenty twenty-two? It, it, it seems like to me that the cost seems fairly fixed and the issue is whether we get it now or, or, or later. But again, I, I accept that I could have, I could have missed something. Um, and then, and then one other question, um, maybe someone on staff, are, are there other hotels in the city that are subject to this additional one percent? Um, this sort of, you know, this additional one percent, my, my, um, my, I think the hotel Nia, right, that does also pay an additional, additional one percent, but someone could correct me if I'm wrong. So in theory, um, you know, this would ultimately put, put, put this hotel on par with, with, um, with the, the other hotel.
Yes. So in, in response to the first question, the election costs, um, are probably about the same between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two. There may be some, um, escalation in, in twenty twenty-two. Um, and then in terms of other hotels, um, hotel Nia, um, was subject to, um, a voter initiative. And so that one percent, uh, increased tax was voted on and did go into effect. Um, and right now, the, the current measure that we're, that's on the table in front of the council would only apply to, um, the Citizen M Hotel. It would not apply to any other hotels, um, at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. There was one other, um, aspect to this is that the mayor may appoint one or two councilmembers to, uh, to write an argument in favor of the ballot. And so I just thinking about, uh, time, how we want to be, how we want to spend our time, at least how I like to spend my time, um, this just isn't one of the items for me. Um, but if there is support for it, um, I am, I am all ears. Uh, councilmember Nash and then Vice Mayor Combs.
Actually, I'll let councilmember, uh, Vice Mayor Combs go first.
Yeah, I would say that generally I'm, I'm in support of it, uh, going around the ballot, but, but I do think councilmember Mueller makes a really important, um, uh, stance in that it is, its passage is, I think, a lot more, um, in doubt, uh, during this, this, um, this year than it might be in future years. Because again, I, I think people will ha- will have a, a naturally visceral negative reaction to just any sort of increase in government taxes, even if they're not paying it. And, and so I do think that that's, that is a really valid, um, issue for concern.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash.
So I, um, am not in favor of putting this on the ballot for the reasons that have been stated. Um, basically, I think this is the wrong year to be putting a tax increase on the ballot. And I also think that even though the costs may be very similar, right now, we do have, uh, tremendous, um, constraints on our resources. And it will take resources, both council and staff and, uh, legal work. And hopefully in two years, we'll be in a better position with that. Um, but I would, I will be in no vote on this.
Thank you. And was there any other follow-up on this? Vice Mayor Combs.
Would, do we, do we need to make a, a motion on it like one way or the other, or can we just drop the debate? I'm just, just trying to see of like how, how we resolve this.
Ms. Herron.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Um, actually, I would like to just check with our legal staff to see if we need to, um, actually make a motion to either pass or, uh, not pass this item. So Cara, if you could pop on. So do we need an official motion to?
You, you, you could either just, um, give direction to staff to, uh, come back with it in two years, or you can, um, uh, vote to, um, not, you know, affirmatively, not, uh, put it on this year's ballot. That we should have some kind of motion, uh, resolving the issue. It could be procedural.
Table this two years.
Sure.
Yes. Okay. So we have a motion on the floor by city councilmember Carlton to, uh, table E three, uh, until twenty twenty-two.
Uh, well, maybe twenty twenty-one. We might need more time to wrap up, but at least to table it till the next election.
Of course. So this is, um, again, a motion by city councilmember Carlton to table item E three regarding resolution sixty-five sixty-four, um, and bring this back to council, uh, closer to, uh, the election of twenty twenty-two. Do we have a second? Councilmember Nash, thank you. By roll call vote, city councilmember Carlton.
Aye.
City councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City councilmember Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs.
No.
Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
And the motion passes with Vice Mayor Combs dissenting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herron. The next item was pulled was E four. Councilmember Mueller.
I need to recuse myself from this item, um, Madam Mayor, because I'm currently in, uh, still within a heritage tree process. So I'm going to turn off my light and wait to be invited back.
Okay. Thank you. I'm not sure if it was Betsy, I'm sorry, councilmember Nash or councilmember Carlton that pulled this.
Betsy, did you want to go first to talk about it? Okay. Um, my only note on this is that it says it's a rea- reauthorization, and it is not a reauthorization. It's a fundamental change. Uh, currently it's, the tree heritage ordinance is, uh, not to exceed five thousand dollars per tree. And the new one is a minimum of five thousand dollars per tree. And I think up to five thousand dollars a tree is, is sufficient, that we should re- reauthorize it, uh, as it is. And, uh, take up any changes when we take up the, the changes as a, as a whole to the tree ordinance here. Review. So I, I agree that we should reauthorize it, but also it's really funny because if you read the text of the report, it talks about not to exceed. And then in the very end where it's actually the actionable part, it then changes to minimum of five thousand. So even within the staff report, it goes back and forth. So I just wanted clarity. I'm happy to vote on this as long as we're clear that it's not to exceed five thousand and, and not the other.
Ms. Silver.
Yes, I just wanted to make one clarification on that. Um, I, I noticed that as well. Um, and, and thank you for, for bringing that out. The, my, my understanding is that past practice has been to, um, to levy a penalty of five thousand dollars, even though the language says up to five thousand dollars. And that generally when you're imposing penalties, you don't want, it's, it's, the language, you should have a, a concrete, um, uh, penalty number. It shouldn't be left to the discretion of somebody that's, that's, you know, writing up the ticket. And so just to bring the language up to, um, current standards and to, um, you know, be more representative of what our actual policy is, we had suggested setting a fixed amount. My understanding, and staff can speak to this later if, if you like, that is that there will be a second round where there will be a more thorough discussion of a range of penalties because I know that some people wanted a higher penalty. Um, we certainly want to, uh, to, um, have a different type of penalty for repeat offenders. And then it, it might be, um, important to have a penalty for, um, you know, removal of, of just a couple of branches that doesn't actually affect the, viability of the tree. So there is a, a need, I think, for a range of penalties. And, and I do believe that staff will be coming back with that as part of phase two in this process.
I agree with that. And for that reason, I don't agree with the not to, that not, I agree with it not to exceed five thousand. And if you need a minimum, fine, it's a, a minimum one thousand. But putting that as five thousand as the minimum then means if we have the branch situation that you were just talking about, it's a minimum five thousand. It's a fundamental change. When we're talking about reauthorizing without a full analysis, we should reauthorize what we're currently doing and not fundamentally change it. So I moved to approve E four, uh, with the language that's actually throughout the whole staff report, which says not to exceed five thousand. And if you want a minimum of a thousand, that's fine. But I don't want to fundamentally change it at this point.
Think, uh, councilmember Nash had, uh, had some questions or input on this item as well. Thank you, councilmember Carlton.
Thank you. So my question was, um, I would like clarification on, um, what the staff report actually says. Under alternative options, it says if the city council does not wish to carry over the penalty structure from the previous ordinance as a stopgap measure, then staff has identified two options that the council could consider. However, an adoption of one of these fees will be deferred to a later date concurrently with the master fee schedule update. So does that mean we actually do not have a choice right now? Or what is the, what is the actual situation?
Good evening, council, our honorable mayor and city council members. Um, so correct, currently there is no violation fee, which is why we're coming to you with a resolution to adopt something tonight.
Is it something, do we have a choice of the three choices, which is to adopt, um, the, to, uh, continue the current carryover, the penalty structure? Or to adopt the task force's recommendation, which was ten thousand dollars? Or to adopt a sixty-eight hundred twenty dollar fine, which reflects an inflation adjustment to the five thousand dollar fine? Is there actually a choice of those three, or can we only do the carryover penalty because of the master fee schedule? That was my question.
Right. So tonight will be based on the resolution, um, which is the five thousand dollars, um, penalty. And then if directed by city council, if you would like to explore that ten thousand dollars, the two other options, the ten thousand dollars and the inflation rate, we will come back, um, at a later date in the, around in the fall to come back with the master fee schedule. So that's five thousand dollars for the resolution is stopgap measure. So if it gets adopted tonight, um, next week, if a neighbor comes and illegally removes the tree, we will capture that violation. Um, and, you know, if, if it does not get approved tonight, then that neighbor who illegally removed the tree next week, there will be zero, um, violation fee.
And is it correct that the, um, task force actually recommended, um, ten thousand dollars based on some? Actually, um, it's, well, it looks like it was based upon, uh, some sort of study.
Correct. So when the task force made that recommendation, they hired a consultant from, uh, Hort Science and Pilot Consultant. And so they made a policy analysis, a report. And in that report, they came up with that ten thousand dollars recommendation.
So, um, I am, tonight I am, um, advocating on behalf of Canopy and, um, the Canopy Organization for a ten thousand dollar, um, penalty fee, which I now understand, um, is, will be coming back if we decide to do that. So I guess I don't know what the situation is at this point, given that we have, uh, one motion on the table.
Councilmember Carlton.
Um, I'm, I advocate keeping the penalty structure that we have because we haven't thoroughly looked into this issue yet. And it does include giving them the flexibility because it does include violations such as pruning excessively, uh, damaging the tree during construction. Some things can be done out of ignorance on how to prune. It could be done by accident. And I think that ten thousand dollars is excessive. And so that's why I made the motion to keep the penalty structure that we have, uh, currently.
Thank you, councilmember Carlton. And we have the option, and I can't remember the staff person that was just here, but we have the option to raise the fee and, at any time. If the fee is inadequate. This is a question for staff. My only question. Hello. You're on mute, Ms. Chin.
All right. Um, so if we were to adopt one of the other options, um, it would need to go through a noticing, a public hearing, um, and all those other formal meetings. And so we, staff believes that would be more efficient if we come back at the same time as the master fee schedule to have a whole, um, adoption with a possibility of an increase for the permit fees.
And the master fee schedule is coming back to us, um, at the end of the year or next year? Do you know?
I believe it is the end of the year, but I think I would defer that question to another staff member.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Murphy popped on the screen for a moment. In the meantime.
Yes, hi, Justin Murphy. I don't have the exact time of when the master fee schedule is going to come back. It could be this fall. It could be next spring. It's typically done in the spring. There's a number, we did not do it this past spring. So we're hoping, uh, we, we'd have a few things that we'd like to bring to council, but as you all know, there's a, a number of items on council agendas and, uh, a number of, uh, other priorities.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, so there is a motion on this, right? Uh, is it, and it's essentially a councilmember Carlton, it, it is a, essentially carrying over as we currently understand, um, the we currently understand the current penalty structure or rate. I second that. I do, for I think all the reasons that have been stated, I think at this moment, the most efficient and impactful step is just to sort of reauthorize the current sort of B schedule and deal with the broader recommended changes or the recommended changes at another time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Nash?
So I'd like clarification on what is the current motion because I agree with what Vice Mayor Combs said, but I do not want it decreased. And I heard some discussion about having a decrease in it. It sounds like we cannot increase it without quite a bit of effort. And I totally agree, this is not, we should not be doing that at this point, but I do not want to see it decreased.
No, to clarify, I'm suggesting that we that we carry over exactly the penalty structure that we have now.
Okay. And just for clarification, I want to note that the pruning is it is a violation which would have a financial penalty if it's pruning excessively, which damages the tree's health. So it's not a simple error where someone just pruned a tree is my understanding.
in my in my youth, I have done some scary pruning by accident myself. So it can happen with particularly with fruit trees, which can be kind of fragile. I learned my lesson, but it can happen.
But a fruit tree is rarely a heritage tree.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Combs?
I'll do that as we go to vote on this. Ignorance of the law is never a defense.
Welcome back, Ms. Heron.
So just to catch us up here, we do have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Carlton. I have a second by Vice Mayor Combs to approve E4 to carry over the current penalties. If that is the correct motion by roll call vote, Councilmember Carlton.
Oh, I. Thank you. So I just wanted to clarify that on page E4.4 of the staff report, the resolution establishes a civil penalty in an amount of $5,000 per violation. And as I understand Councilmember Carlton's motion, we will change that language to a civil penalty in an amount not to exceed $5,000.
And that's exactly what we do now. So I wanted to keep it exactly as we do now.
Thank you.
Any changes we'll deal with later.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cara. Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. So again, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Carlton.
Hi.
City Councilmember Nash?
No, because I don't agree with the minimum of the way it's been restated in the resolution.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes with City Councilmember Nash dissenting and City Councilmember Mueller recused. And at this time, I will ask City Councilmember Mueller to rejoin us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And I do not remember who pulled item E5 authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for CARES funding for Caltrain.
Oh, I had one question that someone had asked me, and so I it should be a quick question. Someone had asked that if we don't authorize the funding to Caltrans, if that funding would the opportunity cost, would that funding be otherwise available to Menlo Park? As I understood it, if the money doesn't go to Caltrans, it would go to maybe another jurisdiction or something else. But I just wanted to ask to clarify since someone asked me that question. Since there is CARES funding going to different places.
Hi, Ms. Nagaya.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. So thank you for the question, Councilmember Carlton. The CARES funding that is subject to this letter is allocated to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission for allocation to transit agencies only. So it doesn't compete directly with Menlo Park, but Caltrain is working with all the other transit agencies in the region in order to come up with this compromise solution. So this was MTC staff and the Blue Ribbon Task Force's recommendation for how to allocate those funds across those various transit agencies in the region.
Thank you. I just wanted that to go on record. I support this.
Councilmember Nash?
I move that we adopt this, that you sign the letter.
I'll second.
Ms. Heron, it's getting faster.
I wasn't even ready this time. All right. So we have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Nash. I have a second by City Mount City Councilmember Carlton to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for the CARES funding for Caltrain by roll call vote. Councilmember Carlton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item that was pulled was E6, award a contract, a construction contract to EPS Inc., Express Plumbing for the Hydration Station Project. I think it was Councilmember Nash that pulled this item.
So I had a question. Basically, I have a concern about spending money at this point, given our budget crisis, realizing that we do, this is coming from the solid waste fund, but I believe that we should have other opportunities to spend that money later. But before we get to that, I was wondering, what is the reliability of these new fountains or the new hydration systems, hydration stations, given that we have nine stations that are currently, which are not these stations that are currently broken? But I'm just wondering, how are the what is the reliability of the new stations? And when I spoke with the city manager yesterday, there was she was going to check.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. This is Michael Foo, Senior Engineer with the Public Works Department. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you, someone. So pursuant to your request, staff followed up with the maintenance schedule for hydration stations. By comparison with the traditional fountain, we reached out to our parks team as well as other cities in the vicinity who have the experience installing hydration stations and found that ultimately, the difference in maintenance is basically negligible. It's pretty much the same level of maintenance between the two types of stations or rather fountains. In either case, a fountain would require some time of some form of periodic maintenance due to age, usage, and just normal wear and tear. And that will be subject to the same kind of maintenance schedule, whether it's a hydration station or a traditional fountain. So that was kind of what we the ultimate consensus that we found when speaking to our park staff and other cities.
And then I had one other question, and that's the city has accumulated, thank you, the city has accumulated 18,079 in unspent funds. And I was wondering, it says that if the city does not do this contract, that amount would be, will we lose that money? I thought I saw somewhere, but I'm not seeing it right now, that we would actually lose that money. And I'm wondering if it had been accumulated, why would we would be, can we just maintain the money in a separate fund or would we actually lose that?
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. So the way the Cal Recycle Beverage and Container Grant works, you have about two and a half years to expend the funds, and there are specific projects you can spend it on. So we, I don't know, we probably wouldn't have to return the entire 18,000, but a certain portion if we don't have any evidence of what we spent the money on that complies with the grant guidelines. And so we'd have to look at another project. So typical other projects would include purchasing recycling bins, maybe for parks or city facilities. And we've we've done we've done that traditionally in the past.
Is it possible to just install these hydration stations where the current fountains are malfunctioning?
I'll defer to Public Works on that.
Well, this is Michael Foo again, Senior Engineer with Public Works. As I understand, I believe subsequent to the award of the contract, we can make modifications to the scope of work, including omissions by way of a deductive change order. That was per my conversation with the city attorney, but I will defer to her to kind of substantiate that statement.
That's correct. Public bidding law doesn't allow you to change the base bid prior to award a bid unilaterally. However, after a contract is awarded, as long as the contractor agrees, you can enter into what we call a deductive change order, which essentially takes out some of those some of that equipment.
Thank you, Ms. Silver.
So I'm concerned about the amount of money in, given our budget crisis and but I certainly would be in favor of replacing the malfunctioning fountains.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I would be in favor of supporting the project as sort of scoped out in the staff report. I think I understand the concerns it is. And if we were talking about, you know, general revenue funds, then then I would definitely be in agreement. But obviously, this is a specifically allocated funding source. And so we would seem to me have to engage in some effort to find other other vehicles for this money. And, you know, I would be if in general, we're talking about fountain or filtration stations that have some wear, you know, and my concern is that we'd go through and replace the ones that are broken and then and then, you know, maybe the other ones would, you know, break down not too long thereafter. I mean, again, in no cases, as I understand it, are we we replacing relatively new water stations. And so in general, I would be supportive, but I do share the concerns that have been just generally expressed about about this, this project as I have in the times in which we have, you know, we this has come up before.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Are there any other questions on this item? Are we ready to vote on it? Or is someone ready to make a motion?
I would move that we award a construction contract to Express Plumbing for the Hydration Station Project.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. So we have a motion on the floor as stated by Vice Mayor Combs. Do we have a second? Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Cara?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that that motion included the base bid and alternative B, which is the staff recommendation.
Thank you for the clarification, Vice Mayor Combs. Are you okay with the motion as stated by interim city attorney, Cara Silver?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So I had a hand raised by Councilmember Mueller. Is that a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Combs. We have a second by City Councilmember Mueller by roll call vote. Councilmember Carlton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Councilmember Nash?
No.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes with City Councilmember Nash dissenting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And we are on the last consent calendar item, E7, approve a waiver of penalties for our transit occupancy tax collected between January 1, 2020 and June 30, 2020. And I do not remember who pulled this item. It was Councilmember Carlton? It was Councilmember Nash?
Hello. So my concern about this is I understand that it's business friendly, but I am concerned about continuing. I believe right now we're continuing to defer the payment of TOT taxes. And at what point does that, do we collect them? When we first did that, I was in favor of it because we didn't know how long the pandemic was going on, and there were no PPP loans, I believe, at that time. At this point, I believe that it is business friendly, but very risky to continue to defer payment of the TOT collections. And I'm concerned just that we continue to add three month increments. And I'm not concerned about the interest that we're losing. I'm just concerned that we are essentially extending a loan. And I don't know how, how will that, when and how will that be repaid? And what happens if the hotel is unfortunately unable to come back?
I can't tell who's coming on screen, so I'll go with Vice Mayor Combs and then Councilmember Mueller.
Um, yeah, so I would am in support of this waiver. But again, echoing, or I think Councilmember Nash makes a lot of valid points. And so I'd like to be quite clear and transparent that this would be the last time I would be interested in supporting a waiver regarding this issue based exactly on most concerns. But for this one, I would, I would be in support of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller and then Councilmember Carlton.
So my, I'm actually was going to ask to speak to professional staff on this because what wasn't in Mr. Jacobson, because wasn't what's while it's intuitive, what's not in the staff report is really justification from the standpoint of evidence from any hotel operator that so when I looked at it, I thought, okay, well, what are the hotel operators saying on this? And, you know, what's their, what are they communicating to us on this issue? So I'm in I'm inclined to do it just because, you know, I do know that just like any business in Menlo Park they're hearing right now, but I I am very interested to hear, you know, what the justification is, what we're hearing from that market segment about this staff
Good evening, Mr. Jacobson.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Councilmember Mueller, what we had heard from the hotel operators was essentially that it would it would secure them liquidity. We did reach out to several hotel operators. We had three that were interested in the original deferral. However, that may have been based on the relatively tight timeline of council approval of the waiver and when those transient occupancy taxes were due, just at the the end of April. So that is following the month at the end of the quarter when they were collected from the occupants, the short term rental occupants. However, when we reached out to many of the operators, some have only opened in limited capacity, some have opened but have seen very few rentals. And so there there does seem to be a desire to continue this just based on the timeframe that we're discussing. The additional timeframe is one that they were largely unable to operate or only able to operate in extraordinarily limited capacity.
I have stayed in a hotel since during the pandemic now. I was a little anxious while I was doing so, but I I was a little anxious while I was doing so, but I have done so. And that hotel actually was pretty full. It wasn't here in the Bay Area. So I do, but I do actually think, given where we are right now with the number of COVID cases on the rise, that those hotel operators may, within the next two to three months, be seeing a decrease actually in whatever business that they're seeing today. And so actually, candidly, I expect that they will, like, based on what we're seeing, I think we're headed toward stricter, stricter rules as opposed to lenient ones. So I will support it. But I do think it's fair, because this is an ongoing dialogue with hotel operators, that we're going to need to figure something out three months from now if conditions have improved. And even if conditions haven't improved, you're going to need to start to really put some parameters around how we make sure the city is, is made whole eventually on this issue. So, but I will, I am going to go ahead and support this tonight just because I think in the next three months, I think, I think they're going to need just about every penny that they can hold on to, to support those, those operations.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
I've personally spoken, I won't, I won't out them because they might not want people to know their financial situation. But I've spoken to two people that are running hotels in Milhawar Park. And Councilmember Mueller is correct. They're nowhere near, they're, they're empty. And the cash cow as well for a lot of these hotels is their bar, which can't open. And they're really struggling just on, on, on cash flow. And they have sincerely asked that we continue this and allow them to pay in September just to help them make sure that they have the cash flow to get through. And everybody's hoping it does get better. I haven't stayed in a hotel, but good for you, Councilmember Mueller. I have, I have had a meal outside of one of our hotels in, in an effort to support them financially. But they're, they're really struggling. They're afraid. And I think that we can do this, even though we need the money too. We have a slightly better cash situation. And I think it's the right thing to do to be able to support our businesses. And one of them even asked me if we would consider addressing their minimum TOT. And I told them I would bring it up, but that would be a bigger fish to fry on another day. But I'm passing along that, the basis of that conversation as well because they want to stay in business and we want them to stay in business too.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
Actually, I just realized, Mayor Taylor, you haven't had a chance to speak. So feel free to go first.
I'm actually, thank you. I appreciate that. I'm actually, I'm comfortable voting to, to waive the fees, the late penalties.
So I just want to add, I, I value all of our businesses, but I wonder why we are choosing our hotels at this point, who we have helped and not some of our other businesses. And it's just, so I will be a no vote because I'm not sure how they, two things. One is I'm concerned about the risk. And I'm also wondering, to me, some of our other businesses are perhaps even in greater need. And so if we were to do some sort of, have some sort of generous loan, realizing it is a loan, it's not, we are expecting to have it repaid. But I'm not sure that this is, I guess I would, I would have liked a more robust discussion, not tonight, about where we are just, you know, where we are going to be providing loans for businesses. And I'm happy to have anyone else try and convince me otherwise.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Vice Mayor Combs?
Councilmember Nash, I'm not going to try to convince you. I'm going to make a motion to approve the waiver of late penalties. And, and I hope you don't change your vote because I, I, I respect it and I think it's a valid point. One, this isn't technically their money, right? We just had a discussion about TOT. Technically, this is money paid by the occupant that is, should, should go to the city. So, so, so there is that, that issue, the extent to which, you know, they're using money that should not be there, or is it not really theirs in the first place for, for cash flow issues, I think, is, is not an ideal situation. So I think you make a very valid point. I do think like what, what may be unique is specifically the way in which, like sort of the TOT is collected. And that is a tax that goes directly to the city. And, and that sort of tax mechanism doesn't exist in a lot of other, or for lots of other businesses. And so I, I think that maybe it is not as easy for, for the specific to essentially sort of float, which is what we're doing, right? Or helping to float those businesses in the way where we're hoping, we're helping the hotel industry. So again, I made the motion to approve the waiver. I'm in support of it, but, but I think you make some incredibly important points.
Thank you. And Councilmember Carlton, was that a second? Perfect. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Combs, a second by a city councilmember Carlton to approve a waiver of late penalties for transient occupancy tax collected between January 1, 2020, and June 30, 2020, if permitted by October 31, 2020, and receipts are reported to the city monthly. So that is the motion on the floor. By roll call vote, City Councilmember Carlton?
Aye.
City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash?
No.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes with City Councilmember Nash dissenting. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for getting us through the consent calendar. And at this time, since it is 6:44, we will have our dinner break and resume at about 7:05. Is that enough time for everyone?
Thank you. So at this time, I, oh, forgive me. Mayor Taylor, continue. I was just going to ask that everyone disengage their webcams and their microphones. Keep them all off. When you return, just engage your webcams until we reconvene officially. Thank you.
Welcome back, Mayor Taylor, members of the city council. Having all city council members present, Mayor Taylor, you may reconvene the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herron. Now we are on our regular business item, F1. Under regular business, the city councils considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. Item F1, receive and file the Environmental Quality Commission's 2030 Climate Action Plan and adopt resolution number 6575 to adopt the climate action plan as amended with staff's implementation strategy. To introduce this item is our Sustainability Manager, Rebecca Lucky.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor and council members. It is my pleasure to co-present the draft 2030 Climate Action Plan with the Environmental Quality Commission. And to start us off, the Environmental Quality Commission will be making a presentation first, and then I will follow up. I would like to introduce Chair Price of the Environmental Quality Commission to start us off.
Chair Price, I am going to unmute your microphone. If you could unmute yourself. Unfortunately, don't have the capability to allow the webcam, but you do have microphone access at this time.
Okay, no problem. And it looks like I should, I'm unmuted, so I hope everybody can hear me.
We can, thank you.
Thank you. So, my name is Ryan Price. I'm the current Chair of the Environmental Quality Commission, and I have the opportunity and the great pleasure to get to introduce the Environmental Quality Commission Climate Action Plan. And one of the things I wanted to highlight is there was a lot of work put into this by the subcommittee that focused on the cap, which is Commissioner Josie Gaylor, James Payne, and Tom Cabot. They drafted this plan, and I think what you'll find is the quality of the plan is outstanding. And I just wanted to know, especially in the climate that we're in right now around future responsibility for the city, that this subcommittee took on creating a plan of equal caliber to that of what would be created by a professional consultant at a cost to the city of simply just their time as volunteers. And this is something that other cities have spent on average between $200,000 and $500,000 on. So, we're really proud as a commission to have their work benefit the city, and especially on an issue that's so present, urgent, and I know is close to our hearts, at least from what we've talked about in the past. So with all of that said, it's my pleasure to get to introduce you to Commissioner Gaylor, who will be walking us through the Environmental Quality Commission cap plan.
You're on mute.
Can you hear me now? Okay. First of all, good evening. My name's Josie Gaylord, a member of the Environmental Quality Commission, resident of Menlo Park. I'm here tonight to introduce you to a plan for tackling climate change in Menlo Park. The last time I presented to you, we reviewed the problem, which is encapsulated here on our first slide. Rebecca, are you, I'm having trouble seeing it. Are other people having trouble seeing the slide? No, you can see it?
You can see it.
Okay. All right, we'll have to, I'll have to adjust. So, in yellow, you can see that temperatures all over the globe are rising at a very rapid rate due to the burning of fossil fuels. Next slide. Here locally, that means that sea level rise on the shores of the San Francisco Bay will rise over the next 40 to 80 years, approximately three feet, if not more. The result is that on the right, you see in areas marked in blue, which are now land, will become flooded with sea level rise, permanently flooded. Next slide, if we zoom in here, and I know you've seen these slides, but just to recap, we see our Bell Haven Neighborhood District One, which will be the most heavily impacted by sea level rise. With three feet of sea level rise, about half of Bell Haven will be permanently flooded. Next slide. If we zoom out a little bit, we can see that our neighbors, north and south, in Redwood City and Palo Alto, will also be drastically affected by sea level rise. Whereas our stretch of Route 101 here in Menlo Park is not underwater, it will be in Palo Alto and Redwood City, which will obviously affect mobility for our residents in Menlo Park. So, the last time I presented to you, we reviewed a video made by, next slide, NBC Bay Area covering the impacts of sea level rise and the fact that development continues in these areas that are predicted to be flooded by sea level rise. Okay, so, next slide. So that's a recap of the problem. I promised you to come back with some solutions. So that's the focus tonight. In tackling, next slide, in tackling any problem, we have options. And with this problem, we have three basic options. One is to do nothing. If we do that, we will be forced to retreat and relocate hundreds of buildings in our District One neighborhood. That will affect thousands of residents and the businesses that are currently located there. Our next option is to adapt. So what does that mean? That means building seawalls and levees as a temporary shield. However, these seawalls, if we do nothing else, will likely only be temporary, and eventually we will be forced to retreat. Our third option is to mitigate the problem, which means tackling the root cause. Here, the root cause is burning fossil fuels, primarily in vehicles and buildings. By tackling fossil fuel emissions and showing leadership, we increase the odds of making those seawalls last a long time. So, among these three options, next slide, mitigation is best. If we can drastically reduce our emissions, as depicted here, and then inspire others to follow us, we believe we increase the likelihood of making those seawalls and levees last. we believe we increase the likelihood of making those seawalls and levees last. Next slide. In order to inspire our residents in other cities, we need a bold goal. In December of this year, the city council expressed support for EQC's recommendation of a 90% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 and a 10% removal of the remaining greenhouse gas emissions through direct carbon sequestration, for example, tree planting, biochar creation, et cetera. EQC recommends that the city council now formally adopt the goal of achieving zero carbon by 2030. So how do we do that? Well, before COVID, the Climate Action Plan Subcommittee of the EQC worked diligently to put together a plan. It was a good plan. We looked at cities all over the world and how they were tackling this problem. We analyzed dozens of options for action. We modeled the cost and the greenhouse gas reductions and whittled it down to 77 actions taken over three years. It looked good. Then COVID hit, and suddenly our city was faced with a budget shortfall and the need to reduce staffing. So we went back to the drawing board and took our 77-point plan and streamlined it to six of the most essential actions. We kept the ambitious goal of zero by 2030, believing that the current budget shortfall is temporary. But we decided to shorten the timeframe from three years to one, which allows us to come back in a year when hopefully the budget picture is a little bit better and the economy is in better shape. At that time, we would propose more actions to get us closer to our goal. Next slide. So here's the trimmed-down plan. We will review each action, so I don't want to spend much time on this slide, but I'll just highlight for you that actions number one and four have the largest potential for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Those are converting our existing buildings to all-electric and then reducing emissions from transportation by reducing our vehicle miles traveled, also called VNT, by 25%. Next slide. The benefit I'm showing, sorry, the plan I'm showing you has a bunch of co-benefits, which I want to highlight. We address equity by focusing on protecting our most vulnerable neighbors. We can improve our outdoor air quality. I think probably many of us have noticed the clearer air with the COVID shutdown. With this plan, we can actually make that clearer air permanent. Similarly, traffic congestion pre-COVID was a nightmare in our city. This plan would improve that by employing strategies for reducing VMT. We can also improve residents' health by giving them more options for walking and biking. By electrifying homes, we can improve indoor air quality, where it's now understood that using gas appliances increases rates of childhood asthma. By removing gas from our homes, we also reduce the risk of pipeline explosions and the maintenance costs associated with keeping up those gas pipelines. Finally, another important co-benefit of the plan is that we would stimulate the local economy and support local jobs by creating work to electrify homes. Next slide. So there are six actions in the trimmed-back plan. I'm going to go through each one pretty quickly, but I'm going to delve into just one action more deeply. Because in that one, there's a large potential for reducing our emissions, and we are also proposing a somewhat novel approach. Okay, action one, as a reminder, is to convert electric buildings, sorry, to convert existing buildings to all-electric. We're proposing two potential options. Number one is called an end-of-flow announcement. So that would be announcing the end of the flow of natural gas in Menlo Park at a certain date in the future. That would give residents time to plan and to convert their devices from natural gas to electric. We believe that Menlo Park may not be ready for this option. And so rather than focus our attention there, I want to direct our focus to option two, which we think is a more viable option for us, and that's something called a burnout ordinance. So the idea here is that when someone's gas furnace or gas water heater reaches the end of its life, rather than replacing it with another gas appliance, we would require the resident to, or business owner, to replace it with a high-efficiency heat pump device. These exist today. They're very mature technology, but they're not commonly used in the Bay Area because our natural gas infrastructure has been so dominant. I think it's next slide, Rebecca. So what are the considerations of a burnout ordinance? One is that, actually, sorry, maybe back on the other slide. Gas furnaces can, just a little bit of background, gas furnaces last about 30 years. On the other hand, the state of California has climate goals, which require the state to achieve carbon neutrality by 2045. So those two things are incompatible. If someone installs a gas furnace today, it will likely still be in use in 2050, when we're expected to not be burning fossil fuels anymore. So, we need to address that. So the good news here is that Clean, Peninsula Clean Energy, our energy provider, has begun to pave the way by offering customers subsidies for electric heat pump alternatives. They've started with a water heater rebate that's pretty generous, which they're rolling out in the next couple of months. And they have a plan to roll out a similar rebate program for space heaters. So the bad news here is that while subsidies are great and they're essential for making this transition, they're actually not enough alone. They will not work fast enough to, in order to avoid catastrophic climate change. We also need mandates. So any cities that hope to meet the Paris Climate Goals must start passing burnout ordinances. Otherwise, their residents are going to have stranded gas assets when the gas eventually stops flowing. Couple of other points about a burnout ordinance. One is that it can be structured in any way that we want. You know, we get to decide what devices are in it. Could be furnaces and dryers and water heaters. That's all up to us. We can also phase in the policy for different sectors of the economy over time. For example, maybe large commercial goes first, residential second, and small commercial last. Another benefit of a burnout ordinance is that whereas a furnace only provides heat to a building, most heat pumps also provide cool air, which is going to become increasingly important as extreme heat events become the norm with rising temperatures. So Peninsula Clean Energy has already expressed support for the idea of a burnout ordinance. Next slide, I think. They have offered technical assistance to help us with developing a model burnout ordinance that other cities within PCE territory could follow. The other way that PC is supporting this action is through rebates. As I mentioned, they already have a rebate program for water heaters. And as a member city on their board, we can also request that they expedite the creation of rebate, similar rebate program for space heaters. Finally, equity is a really important concern for any policy that's going to require something of a city's residents. We need to make sure that everyone can afford this change. We have a couple of options here. One is already being addressed by Peninsula Clean Energy. In its most recent $6 million program, it carved, it created a carve-out for low-income families of $2 million. We should encourage PCE to continue to robustly support low-income families through rebates. But another option that the city has would be to increase the natural gas utility user tax rate from its current 1% to 3.5%, which is already voter-approved. And that would provide another, at least $300,000 a year in funding, which could be used to support low-income families, to make the needed appliance changes. So that's a deep dive into action one. Next slide, here's a summary of that action. Next slide. So now let's quickly review the other five actions. Action number two is to set a citywide goal for both increasing EVs and decreasing gasoline sales. This is really a leadership exercise. It asks the city to create a goal for both of these and then invites residents to pitch in and do their part, seeing others join in the effort, and residents can watch other, as together we can work to achieve the goal. Here, we're envisioning that communication with the public would happen through social media and perhaps a dashboard-type page on the city's website. Next slide. Action number three is expanding access to EV charging. So there's an equity component here that's important. Many people living in multifamily dwellings in the city of Menlo Park do not have access to EV car charging. So the idea here is to support, is to partner with landlords and building owners to install EV charging for those multifamily residences and possibly to look at policies that might actually require this. Next slide. So there are many ways to reduce VMT. Sorry, action number four is about VMT and targeting a 25% reduction or an amount that is recommended by the Complete Streets Commission. So there are many ways to reduce VMT, but we're recommending two approaches here. One is to look at changing our zoning, so we would encourage higher density, especially for housing near transit. The other way is to create a network of protected pathways, both for pedestrians and bikes throughout town, that encourage people to get out of their cars and use other forms of transport to get around town. Again, this has the co-benefit of reducing traffic. Action number five, next slide, is eliminating the use of fossil fuels for municipal buildings. You can see on the right that greenhouse gas reductions from this action are actually quite low. So the reason to do it is to show leadership, to demonstrate that it's possible. And along the way, we think that the city will learn some, you know, learn some lessons about electrification for vehicles and buildings and that those lessons could inform policy as those are rolled out to the community. Next slide, action six. Action six is the final action in the plan. The first five actions were focused on reducing greenhouse gas emissions to lessen the product, problem, so mitigation. Action six recognizes that even if we're successful at reducing emissions and catalyzing similar actions at the state and national level, there's just a certain amount of heating that's already baked into the atmosphere and therefore, a certain amount of sea level rise that may be unavoidable. So that means we need to be ready to build seawalls, and in order to do that, we need to come up with a plan. We need to engage residents and business owners in District One. We need to inform residents of what may be coming. We need to decide whether we're going to build seawalls for three feet or six feet and how it will be paid for. Anyway, EQC believes we need a city-level plan and that we should get started on that plan immediately. Next slide. So just a couple of reminders, we're not passing any ordinances tonight. We're not asking for that. So especially actions number one and three, which have policy implications, we're not there yet. All we're asking for is council's permission to authorize staff to develop these policy proposals so that policies, so those policies could have really robust public engagement if the council wishes. You know, we can tailor it to our needs, and eventually those policies would come to council for a vote. So in those policies, you know, we can choose what gas appliances, for example, are included in the burnout ordinance. Another thing to remember, especially for these two, is that other cities are likely to follow us, as they did with the reach codes. You may be aware of this, but after we passed our reach codes in September, requiring all-electric new construction, many other cities followed suit. At least, in fact, at least 20 cities in the state of California have passed or adopted a Menlo Park-style reach code. So we've already demonstrated that we can pass a policy that gets picked up by other cities, significantly magnifying our effort. Next slide. Okay, so the EQC's recommendation to council. On June 24th, EQC unanimously recommended that the city council adopt the full six-action climate plan and that action begin on all six actions this year. I realize that's different from the staff recommendation, so I just wanted to be clear about what the EQC's recommendation was. Now I want you to turn your attention to how we will fund the cap. Next slide, which Rebecca Lucky will also speak to. I just want to point out that we have some options here. One is the Capital Improvement Plan, which has already accumulated $300,000 to put toward implementation of a climate action plan, with another $100,000 being recommended to move over into the CIP for that purpose this year. So that means there's either $300,000 or $400,000 for implementing the cap. Another funding source, which I mentioned earlier, is the potential for $300,000 a year that could come from increasing the natural gas utility users' tax from its current 1% to 3%. Yet another option would be for the city to borrow money. We believe that given the magnitude of the costs that we will be dealing with as a community, if we don't address this issue, that borrowing money today is justified because it offsets the future, those future costs, which could be 100-fold the cost of investing in a climate action plan. Another source of funding for the cap is PCE collaboration. Again, they've expressed support for helping us work on a model burnout ordinance. Similarly, it's possible that the county could be interested in supporting what we're doing. And finally, we'd be open to applying for grants from foundations to support the work. Next slide. So the economic benefits of bold leadership are really significant here. We were interested to assess the magnitude of that benefit. So we actually created a model using a business tool called Expecting Value Analysis, which is taught in business schools and used by for-profit companies, including the oil industry, actually, to assess the risk and relative reward of taking different actions with an unknown result. What's important here is that we use the tool to assess what the financial benefit to Menlo Park would be of investing $1.5 million in a climate action plan in terms of avoided cost. And the model shows that by investing $1.5 million today, we avoid $144 million in future costs. And that's discounted with a lot of low-probability events. That seems like a great investment of precious city resources. Next slide. So now, I'd like to just touch on a couple parallels that we're seeing between COVID and the climate crisis. First, I want to thank you all for your leadership through the COVID crisis. You did a bunch of things that I think are really admirable. You heeded warnings from scientists and experts in deciding how to react. You acted early and decisively in ways that some may have labeled as extreme, but ultimately were seen as prudent. Now we're asking you to do the same with climate change. Listen to scientists and experts, act early and decisively. In fact, we invite you to look over the horizon at the coming risks of climate change, as we know good leaders do, and act decisively to mitigate those risks for our community. Another thing we've learned from the COVID crisis is that we cannot rely, next slide, on the federal or state government necessarily to save us. They might be there for us, but they may not be. We just don't know. Especially when resources are stretched thin, which they will be when the climate crisis really ratchets up. Another parallel is that if we don't act swiftly to address the crisis at hand, economic consequences of delay will dwarf significantly any significant, any perceived savings we might have from delaying today. Mitigation measures such as shutdowns for COVID or cutting emissions for climate may seem really costly today, but ultimately those mitigation measures save incredible amounts of money in the long run. And finally, for both crises, every day of an action is costly, both in terms of economics and lives lost. So I want to leave you with a few thoughts. One is that leadership matters. Next slide. Menlo Park, as I mentioned, passed a reach code in November, in September. This Merck News headline shows that, I think it was within seven days, San Jose had followed suit. And now over 20 cities in the state of California has passed a similar ordinance. So we've demonstrated that we can lead within the state of California. We also know that the state is often an environmental leader on environmental policies in the nation. And so what becomes law here is likely to become law in 10 other progressive states in the U.S. I've heard people ask me, you know, how can Menlo Park really have an impact on this huge global issue? But there really is a possibility that what we do here in Menlo Park could have ripple effects throughout the country. Next slide. So in summary, the climate crisis is dire. We need strong, a strong goal and a novel approach. I wish incentives were enough alone, but they're not. We need incentives plus mandates. These actions will take, we take, will have many co-benefits to the community. Clean air, improved health, less traffic. Our investments we make now will save us 100-fold in reduced future damages, especially if strong leadership persuades others to follow. And next slide. We really like this quote. We pulled it from our report. It's from a black climate activist named Hopkins, and he says, "Climate change requires that we accept that portions of our local and global communities are, quote, 'sacrifice zones.' And you can't have sacrifice zones without disposable people, and you can't have disposable people without racism." So climate and race and justice are all intertwined. And then finally, just on a personal note, I want to share a couple of things. I've been reading through the city council email log to see the public comments coming in on the climate action plan. As you've probably seen, the letters are overwhelmingly positive. But two really striking things came through to me. One is the children who wrote in. They're scared for their futures. They're scared for their futures. And they're asking the adults in their lives to step up and solve this problem. That's us. The second thing that came through in these letters from residents is that there seems to be a real hunger for leadership on this issue. This is a tough time in our country, and many of us are seeing the deadly impact of a lack of leadership. And my sense is that people are longing to feel proud of their community. And I hope that this plan offers people that. So on that note, tonight, I invite you to make a decision that will make us all proud to call Menlo Park our home. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Gillard. Ms. Lucky, my guess is you're not complete.
Yes, I am going to follow up with just a few more slides. So thank you, Commissioner Gillard, for your presentation. And the Environmental Quality Commission, Rebecca Lucky, Sustainability Manager. And I'm going to continue on just to talk through the implementation amendments to the Environmental Quality Commission's 2030 Climate Action Plan. So the recommendation for this year is to start work on three of the six proposed Environmental Quality Climate Action Plan strategies. And a lot of this really came from discussing with departments what their, what their work streams are, what their workloads are, and also looking at city council priorities of other projects that the city council wants to move forward and what we could really accomplish with our current resources and current budget and anticipated budget. And so what it came down to was to explore policy options to electrify all existing buildings by 2030. So that's strategy or action number one of the EQC cap. And explore policy options to expand electric vehicle infrastructure for existing multifamily and commercial properties. And this is actually a carryover from the previous climate action plan. We have started work on this to look at how deficient existing multifamily properties are with infrastructure for vehicle charging. And then the third is to eliminate the use of fossil fuels from municipal operations. So the initial investment and budget required is three, between $355,000 to $435,000. And we do have a carryover budget of $300,000. That's available in the cap implementation program of the capital improvement plan for 2019, 2020. And every year, typically about $100,000 is appropriated to the cap implementation program. And this will be necessary for fiscal year 2020, 2021. And staff is anticipating bringing this forward to the city council by the end of this month. I do want to point out too, that there are some costs that are very difficult to quantify and may need further appropriation this year, such as pursuing a electric vehicle policy requirement for existing multifamily and commercial property owners. Any implementation ongoing, ongoing administration or enforcement haven't been included at this time and would need to be determined through the policy evaluation phase. Additional revenue, as the Environmental Quality Commission spoke about, could be explored by increasing the natural gas utility users' tax or by requesting funding from other agencies that would benefit from Menlo Park's work. So why these three strategies? It's reasonable work to begin with, within the current and anticipated budget and staff capacity. There are high greenhouse gas emissions reductions associated with it because we do get renewable power from Peninsula Clean Energy that's mostly greenhouse gas-free. And it's also to capitalize on state and regional financial incentives that are currently available through agencies like Bayren. They offer contract education and they also offer rebates. And for building electrification, there's rebates for induction stoves, for heat pumps, for heating and cooling, electric heating and cooling equipment. And for EV charging, the state and Peninsula Clean Energy do have financial incentives of up to $24 million in San Mateo County for multifamily and commercial property owners to install electric vehicle charging infrastructure. So really, the strategy is to use policy to drive and motivate the community to become more educated and participate in financial incentives so that they can save now on replacing fossil fuel appliances and vehicles rather than later. So what does the initial work really look like? So for building electrification and EV infrastructure, it's first contracting the appropriate professionals and experts to assist with options for the city council to consider. So this includes legal assistance, energy analysts, a contract building official, and any other support staff that might be needed. It's also evaluating policy options based on current incentives, community acceptance and knowledge, benefits, risk, cost to implement for the community and also for city operations. And really, what it's, what we're looking to try to aim for is to aspire to achieve minimal financial impacts for the community and the city while still reaching the strategy's goal or action's goal. And also importantly, it's to conduct public engagement. And if council moves forward with adopting the 2030 Climate Action Plan, staff will bring back, probably in August or September, a public engagement strategy for pursuing a building electrification EV infrastructure. And this can really bring together stakeholders, both environmental advocates, contractors, real estate, property owners to the table to discuss and learn from each other. And then finally, that, finally, what the in-process would look like for the initial work is council adoption of a policy or ordinance and/or a program. So what does the initial work look for, like for municipal operations? The city council did already adopt a green fleet policy in April. So that's, we've got a head start in this area. There, in implementing this policy this year, what staff would look at is if there are fossil fuel appliances or assets that are at the end of its life, staff will evaluate a non-fossil fuel option. It's also important to note that sometimes additional appropriations may be needed to look at further analysis. For example, if looking to electrify pool pumps, you typically need more space, and then we'd have to do a space analysis. Sometimes there's a cost premium for non-fossil fuel options. And the city is also already evaluating discontinuing the use of fossil fuels for the new Bell Haven Community Center and Library. This facility is already going to be required to be all-electric under the new Menlo Park Reach Code. And we're currently evaluating whether a renewable backup energy source can be used in place of a diesel generator. But what about the other strategies? The recommendation is to keep these strategies in a 2030 cap, but approach implementation differently. So for setting citywide goals for increasing EVs and decreasing gasoline sales, the recommendation is to partner with regional agencies to implement a marketing campaign, such as influencing Peninsula Clean Energy or San Mateo County. For reducing community vehicle miles traveled by 25%, the recommendation is to evaluate this next year due to competing, completing and competing for current complementary projects to support this goal, this goal, such as the Transportation Master Plan, the Transportation Master, the Transportation Management Association that is going to be heard by council this, this week. There's also an SB2 grant that looks at how the city can incentivize housing in the downtown area and El Camino Corridor. So there are a few projects that really capture the essence of this action. And then the others to adopt, adopting a climate adaptation plan, the recommendation is to revisit this in 2022 to evaluate the existing regional efforts currently underway through the newly and recently formed Flood District known as Resilient San Mateo. So the impacts and trade-offs. So although contractors can be hired to assist in handling the bulk of this work, it does require senior and executive staff to oversee and provide guidance and support to deliver products, the best policy or program products for the community. And this can really delay day-to-day activities, such as responding to customers and community requests in timely manner. It can slow the work of existing projects or priorities or even really slow the work of the cap itself. So staff is recommending an implementation strategy that is doable, but really unable to quantify the impacts to other city priorities at this time or the length of time it may take to complete the recommended cap strategies. So the recommendation before you tonight is to adopt the 2030 Climate Action Plan as amended with staff's implementation strategy, including a goal to reach carbon neutrality by 2030 and to begin work on developing policy and program options to bring back to the city council to convert existing buildings to electric, increase electric vehicle infrastructure at or near existing multifamily and commercial properties, and to phase out fossil fuel use at municipal operations. And the resolution does include Attachment A in the staff report to revisit the plan in one year to include further necessary actions to reach carbon neutrality. And with that, that concludes all the presentations on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucky. I appreciate the presentation. And I wanted to see if the council had any follow-up questions before we went to public comment. No? Okay. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment at this time?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, City Council. So as a reminder. As a reminder, any public comment received via web form has been posted to the agenda and available for your view, as well as any member of the public. So at this time, we are asking if there is any member of the public who wishes to speak on the current item, which is F4, as displayed on the screen, regarding receiving file of the EQC's 2013 cap plan and adoption of Resolution 6575. To engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen, we'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the city council. At this time, we have a few hands raised. I'd like to start by Adina Levin. Adina, I have unmuted you. If you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time. Again, this is for Adina Levin. You are off mute. If you are able to unmute yourself, you can address the city council at this time.
Terrific. Okay, now I am off mute. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Adina Levin, the chair, newly chair of the Complete Streets Commission, and speaking at this time, representing the consensus of a straw vote of the Complete Streets Commission, following our last meeting, where we would like to strongly support the Climate Action Plan and in particular, the items in the Climate Action Plan that deal with transportation. We strongly support the initiatives to reduce vehicle miles traveled that are proposed, including relating to the implementation of the Transportation Master Plan and housing. And with regard to that, the staff report says that there would need to be a delay because there is not enough staff. However, during the budget discussion, a majority of the city council members had said that they would be potentially willing to use funds for reserves for important purposes, such as advancing the, advancing the Climate Action Plan. And therefore, I would urge you to unfreeze enough positions that would enable the VMT reduction proposals to move forward in the Climate Action Plan. In addition, we support the items to encourage the use of electric vehicles and the charging stations in multifamily housing. Some of our members did have some concern about the equity implications. And I'm glad to hear the discussion in the presentation about how those equity concerns are being taken into account. And I think that the city should continue to do so in order to make sure that moving to electric vehicles will not disadvantage people who can't easily afford to go out and, you know, trivially buy new cars. So once again, the, you know, support the EQC's advancing of this. The climate crisis is not going away, and the city should move ahead and take action. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adina. Our next public commenter is Jen Woolison. Jen, you're off mute and able to address the city council. Again, this is for Jen Woolison. Jen, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Taylor and council. I first want to say that the residents of Menlo Park are extremely fortunate to have such an incredible Environmental Quality Commission, especially this incredible subcommittee. And Josie's presentation was really inspiring. I also want to just reiterate Adina Levin's points that she just made about making sure that we do everything we can to do the transportation improvements sooner than later to reduce vehicle miles traveled. I also very much appreciate the, the, now, the thinking about equity with the rebates and all of the thought that goes into it. When I think about kind of city council and the residents in our community, I think we're all a little bit daunted by climate change. And a lot of us feel like there's nothing we can do. But we can elect our leaders to enact policies locally that can have an impact on our future lives. And I'm sitting here with my 10-year-old son, and I'm thinking about what can we do locally to make his chances for living in a healthy, sustainable world better? And I would really urge you to take your role and what you have in your domain and your power to do the most you can on this incredibly important issue. So thank you, and I urge you to be courageous and bold. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Our next public commenter is Dashiel Leeds. Dashiel?
Hello.
Perfect. Thank you.
My name is Dashiel Leeds. I'm a conservation assistant for the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. I'd like to offer a sincere thank you to the members of the Environmental Quality Commission for writing a truly excellent draft Climate Action Plan. It's really amazing, and we are in strong support. So we support the EQC recommendation that city council now formally adopts the goal of zero carbon by 2030. We also support the EQC recommendation that council authorized staff to develop all six actions found within the draft Climate Action Plan. And among those six actions, we especially support Action One, the conversion of 100% of existing buildings to all-electric by 2030. Action Five, the electrification of municipal buildings. And Action Six, developing a climate adaptation plan. I'd just like to touch on Menlo Park's reach code last year really quick. So I think last year, the city council demonstrated their leadership by passing a really strong code. And we actually saw what was called Menlo Park-style language pop up in all of these different reach codes throughout the states, like in Cupertino, Mountain View, and in San Mateo County. We saw like echoes of Menlo Park's language. And so I strongly believe that if you pass this Climate Action Plan today, that you will not be alone. Other cities and counties will join you. And I think that this collaboration will increase the likelihood of all of us meeting our greenhouse gas reduction targets. You passed the reach code, and it rippled throughout the state and even other states, like some cities in Massachusetts even considered these proposals. So I think we can have a really strong ripple effect here. And we really need massive action. We needed it yesterday. And I honestly believe that it starts locally. It starts, you know, maybe with just a city taking a strong leadership stance. And I really believe that if we show the way forward, that other cities will follow, and we may generate momentum more quickly than we would even realize. So thank you again to everyone involved in this planning process. We strongly support the Climate Action Plan. And I really hope that Menlo Park takes yet another step towards climate leadership today. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter is Janelle London. Janelle, you are off mute and able to address the city council at this time.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and
Thank you, honorable mayor and city council members. I am a member of the EQC and a very proud one, very proud of our subcommittee, but I am speaking on my own behalf today. So I want to thank you for your bold leadership on climate action, and I urge you to adopt the proposed Climate Action Plan, and especially Item Two, and in particular, the annual gasoline sales reduction goal. So why is a gasoline reduction goal so important? Well, burning gasoline is by far Menlo Park's biggest source of carbon emissions, at 55.8% of the total. Gasoline reduction is the only transportation metric that really matters for climate. If all of our transportation measures aren't resulting in a reduction in gasoline sales, we're not having the necessary impact on climate. We must reduce the amount of gasoline pumped within our borders to meet our climate goals, and we should be very clear about our intention to do that. Tracking gasoline sales also helps us assess if the impact of our transportation greenhouse gas reduction measures, such as expanding access to EV charging and reducing VMT, are actually working. That helps us see if these strategies ultimately aimed at displacing gasoline are working, so we can refine them if they're not. You know, once the city sets a goal, Menlo Park residents will rise to the challenge. We rallied to reduce water use during the drought, and we can certainly rally to reduce gasoline use in this climate crisis. But for gasoline reduction to happen at top speed, the city has to set it as a goal. And you know, if Menlo Park leads the way, other cities are also going to set gasoline reduction goals. And then, as a region, we'll be able to see where the most gasoline is being sold and focus our displacement strategies in those areas. Also, in terms of equity, setting a gasoline reduction goal and budget, it costs the city nothing, but it moves the needle on climate. You know, not everyone can afford to buy or lease a new electric car, as Adina Levin pointed out, but everyone can work to cut their use of gasoline. So I urge you to please adopt the full Climate Action Plan, and especially the gasoline sales reduction goal. Thank you again.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter will be Karen Grove. Karen, you are off mute and able to address the city council at this time.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, great. I want to reiterate all of the supportive comments. I want to say thank you to the EQC. Your report and your plan are truly amazing, and we're very lucky to have you. So I want to extend my support for the EQC Commission's plan. And I also want to say I really appreciate hearing from the commission about their plan, as well as from staff about what they believe their capacity is to implement and their priorities. But I would absolutely encourage finding a way to address all six points, in particular, the vehicle miles traveled reduction. I've seen statewide reports that show that that is what we must do, or we all meet our goals. So I hope that we can lead the way. And I also appreciate the emphasis on equity because I don't think we can reach our goals if we don't address, if we don't do it in an equitable fashion. The climate is not going to accommodate our made-up hierarchy. And so we need to address this in a way that supports everyone. So I just express my support and encourage us to take the steps to unfreeze staff, increase our utility user rates, and whatever we need to, to get this done, because it's probably the most important thing we can focus on right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter is Scott Marshall. Scott, if you can unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time.
Yes. Hello. Hello, Mayor Taylor and council members. I was a former EQC member myself, a former Heritage Tree Task Force member, and currently, I am a member of the Canopy Advocacy Committee. I'm going to read my comment. The EQC Climate Action Plan Subcommittee has spent countless hours researching and composing the many options for the council to choose the best path forward to reduce the city's carbon output. Due to COVID-19 virus, the city's budget demands have shifted from working on a wish list of projects to reducing staff, altering normal business practices, and distributing reduced revenues into more projects that help adjust our civic functions during this pandemic. These fiscal restraints do put a limit on what plans can be implemented in the near future. Optimistically speaking, some amount of normalcy should return to our lives within a few seasons. The Climate Action Plan is a guideline of procedures that over several years can help reduce Menlo Park's carbon output. One item that seems to be overlooked in the CAP Subcommittee's plan is the benefits of a healthy urban forest and a city's natural environment. A vibrant canopy sequesters carbon while providing shade, which reduces the urban heat island effect. These trees also provide natural cooling of buildings that in turn can reduce the dependence on energy consumptive air conditioning. Trees and their surrounding natural environment provide filtration of incoming rainwater that they help then to retain moisture. They also act as a conduit to channel water below to our subterranean ground supply, water supply, excuse me. Trees provide habitat and increased property values as well. Lastly, trees are relatively inexpensive to plant, and after their initial first year of watering, the trees continue to share their benefits with the community with virtually no cost to the city. The proposed CAP Plan should include targeted actions that increase carbon reduction through nature-based solutions, such as an Urban Forest Master Plan that establishes a baseline for the city's tree canopy. This can be monitored to mark future growth of our urban forests. This plan will establish where more trees are needed to be planted to create a balance in the city's tree canopy. Also, with the establishment of a baseline, the city can set goals to increase our canopy for 2030. The cities of Palo Alto and Sacramento have included similar plans to their Urban Forest Master Plans as one of many components within their carbon reduction goals. The city of Menlo Park should also join the leaders of our region and add programs that promote a stronger canopy and a more vibrant natural environment to this Climate Action Plan. I want to say thank you very much, and also, I thought that was a very great presentation by the Subcommittee. And I hope you do adopt their plan and maybe some additions from our plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter is going to be Bruce Nigel. Bruce, you are off mute and able to address the city council at this time.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank the mayor and the council for allowing us to be able to speak on this. And you guys have got a very good plan in front of you. It doesn't have the detail that the plan in Mountain View has, but then you have a real benefit of focus. This is a plan that you'd be able to sell to lots of people because it'd be easy to understand what's in it. I think it's very key, it has been mentioned before, about who we're really doing this for. We're really doing this for our children and our grandchildren. And this, a couple of examples came up here. I'll mention another one that I heard at the time. When Mountain View was going through their process of releasing their REACH Code or voting on it, the mayor came and said, geez, you know, I have to vote for this and vote for even stronger because my children are telling me they don't know if they have a place to live when it comes time for them to be older. So I think it's very key that we understand who it is we're doing this for. And I think you've got a very good plan in front of you. The one thing I would suggest that you add to it that's been kind of implied is to make sure that you're measuring things along the way, especially if you're doing something by 2030. I would suggest having annual measurements and calibration to make sure that you're on track. If you're doing something great, you can double down on it. If something isn't working, then you can change it. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter is Kevin Gallagher. Kevin, you are off mute. If you would like to address the city council at this time. Again, this is a call for Kevin Gallagher. Kevin, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time. Okay. Kevin, are you able to unmute yourself? There we go.
Hi, Sarah. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate the work, appreciate the work that was put into coming up with this plan. It seems really creative, like it has a lot of good vision. I appreciate the parallels to COVID. I think that is super helpful since it's something we're living the reality of pretty starkly. I think for me, this current situation has enabled us to better understand our collective capabilities in a lot of ways. Six months ago, I feel reasonably confident that none of us thought we'd be able to make the changes to our individual lives and collective lives that we have since made. I think with climate disaster, climate change, there are a lot of ideas that a lot of people agree upon as good, but just don't see as realistic. So I hope that we can take that lesson from the situation that when the need is sufficient or capable of enacting pretty remarkable changes in our lives. I recently read the book On Fire by Naomi Klein, which I would highly recommend to everyone who hasn't read it. One of the many insights that this book provided me with is the idea that we can't consume our way out of climate disaster. We need to look at comprehensive changes to our behaviors and to our existing resources here. It can't just be about producing and purchasing newer, greener products. I think the plans that were proposed here include some changes of that nature, which is really promising to me. This is obviously a global problem. You know, there's nothing that Menlo Park on its own is going to be able to do about climate change, but we all share responsibility for it. While we all share responsibility, we don't all have the same capacity to address it. I think Menlo Park does. We are blessed to be a relatively very wealthy community. Somebody has to lead the way, and frankly, if it isn't communities who have the wealth to do so, then it won't be anyone. So I really hope that we can commit to this plan and, as some other people have stated, to take a leadership role in the fight. I also appreciate this plan for acknowledging the disproportionate ways in which climate change has already affected poor black and brown communities here in Menlo Park, on the peninsula, and all over. And I hope that whatever we decide to do, we can find a way to center the experiences and expertise of black and brown folks here in Menlo Park as we're figuring out how to respond to this. Thanks.
Thank you. And our final public commenter for this item is Norma R. Norma, if you would like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi. I would just like to state my support for the Climate Action Plan. I think a way to ensure that there is enough funding for the plan is actually to use the Facebook grants. As stated in the F2 staff report, which I know we're getting to, the amendment language does not require the city to use these funds for police services. It only requires the funds to be spent on services that benefit the safety of local community. As the presenters before me have proposed, climate change is the biggest threat to community safety right now. A recent article by Time Magazine states that we are on the brink of climate catastrophe. If we do not act now, our critical fight against climate change may come too late. Please adopt the full action plan, and please divert the money from the B4 Police to fighting climate change. Menlo Park needs to set a precedent for other cities to follow in our steps. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. So at this time, it is a final call for any raised hands on Item F1, which is the EQC's report out and the adoption of the Climate Action Plan. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you for everyone who provided a public comment. And I just wanted to share with you that Councilmember Carlton is on the line. She's having some difficulty with her bandwidth. So I wanted to allow her time to speak since we are unable to see her. Councilmember Carlton, at this time, can you unmute yourself? I'm not even sure if you're on mute.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I am quite happy to let my colleagues go first. I'll signal you when I would like to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any council members that have any questions or follow-up on both presentations that we received and also the public comment that we just listened to? I guess we're all in agreeance. Now, what do we agree on? Everything that we just saw? Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and go. So I, first off, just want to thank the EQC Subcommittee for putting in tremendous amount of work on this plan. And for me, the way I look at this is, this is, we are going to walk the walk, not talk and talk, or not. And you can't walk the walk without putting in the work and developing the plan. So I really think that, you know, it's funny, people give a lot of speeches about what this means on a global scale and the impact in others following, and all that, mayor may not be true. We may do this, and no one may follow us. And, but that doesn't really, that's not really of import to me because when I look at this issue, this issue really is an issue that demands local action. Local action, if we are going to make any strides in climate issues, it requires people taking action locally and local governments taking responsibility to go ahead and implement policy that makes those actions easier. So tonight, but for those who would be concerned, tonight, really, we're not, as pointed out in the presentations, we're not actually adopting any ordinances tonight. What we are doing, however, is developing a plan and starting a robust public engagement process to go ahead and move toward passing those, passing ordinances, passing Climate Action Plan. But there will be, there will be community engagement in how we go ahead and put those, put those ordinances together, put that policy together. But we will never get there if we don't do the groundwork to have the discussion. And tonight, we are empowering our community to have a necessary and important and vital discussion. So I'm in support of what we're doing this evening. The speaker, actually, on the Facebook funding is interesting to me. As I've indicated to folks prior, I initially wasn't a supporter of using the Facebook and the agreement that we ended up at when that was brought forward to us, and actually tried to figure out a way to make that work in response to what I was hearing from the community at the time. I have since, based on feedback from the community recently, and started to believe that that support isn't there for it anymore. And my initial concerns that I had about that have actually come to fruition, unfortunately. So I am actually interested in seeing if that money can, fortunately, the way we fashioned that agreement, we can take that money and use it toward other uses. And I am actually interested in pursuing it. That's a very interesting idea. Can that money be used toward pursuing the Climate Action Plan? It is absolutely a case. And I know this from my personal work, that, that community of colors that underserved economic, underserved economic areas are absolutely impacted disproportionately by natural hazard events. And that is because the property values of those areas are worth less than others over time because they're, it's foreseeable that the property values in those areas are going to be affected by natural hazard events. And so I think this isn't an investment in equity. I think it's an investment in our city's future. I think it's something that cities will have to be playing catch-up on long term. And I think it's the responsible and prudent thing to do now to start developing these plans. So I support it. I support taking the money initially from the CIP to be very, to be very particular on that. So I want us to investigate whether or not we can take the money from the Facebook and the agreement, and be dedicated here. But I also, if that is in the interim time period for the funding tonight, I want to go ahead and take that from the CIP source, the dedicate CIP fund, which already exists for this work. And I think what we should do is go ahead and reach out to PCE, I'm sorry. I'm probably pronouncing that acronym wrong. And, and other public agencies and figure out who are going to have to come to the table eventually and do this planning and do that work with us. So, but I think this is important and exciting tonight, and I think that's what's really amazing about this tonight is having worked with Councilmember Nash in the Subcommittee and having watched the way that our professional staff worked with the residents and our very knowledgeable residents in commission to bring this together is just something that is, was a wonder to behold, a compliment to all of them, and puts our city in a very powerful place going forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. And just as a follow-up to the question around the Facebook funds, I did receive an email, I think, from the same public, the person that made the public comment about reallocating them and reallocating the funds. And last year, I do remember asking about using the funds to purchase the air quality monitors, and I was told that I wasn't able to use them for that. And just thinking about, and I'm not sure if Mr. Pogaros, if you remember, what the cost would have been if we purchased the air quality monitors. And I know I did not give you heads up on this question, but I just thought of it. So, Mr. Pogaros, I'm not sure if you're available. Thank you.
If that's okay. Okay, totally, totally fair. So I first want to thank the Subcommittee and professional staff for their presentations. I think the Subcommittee's presentation reminded me how lucky we are to live in Menlo Park and how talented our residents are. And I have to say, I share and echo a lot of the sentiment already expressed by Councilmember Mueller and understand that, like, this sort of kicks off a process, right? And that there are still lots of details, and they will be challenging and difficult, but certainly lots of details that would need to be, to be worked out. And certainly, I don't want to stop that process or not be supportive of that process. But I will say, again, you know, converting 100% of existing buildings to all-electric by 2030 is a very aggressive goal. It's very, very aggressive. And so, and again, I'm supportive of these efforts, but it does give me some caution of how that happens, right? And how that, and the political capital, the actual real capital that it takes to get there. And so, and so I would only, you know, so in my, expressing my support at this moment, that's the challenge I would sort of throw to the Subcommittee and to professional staff. I mean, this seems like a really Herculean undertaking, and that's a really an aggressive timeline. And so, especially when you think of something like, I think we said, that, like, the life of a water heater is, I heard 30 years, let's even just say it's like 15 years, right? It becomes, it becomes really, you know, really aggressive. And I know, like, you know, if we're talking about, again, looking at residences, something like a water heater, most people, in a lot of cases, you replace a water heater when your, your water heater breaks. And so that means at that moment in time, you don't have hot water, right? And so your, your main sort of goal is, is getting hot water. And that, in a lot of cases, we don't, a lot of houses aren't wired and don't have the infrastructure at that moment to do, to do the other alternative sources. I know this from personal experience, very recent personal experience. And so we can't get people at that time that their water heater breaks, and that's when that change is happening now. Because, again, at that moment, all they know is that they need hot water, right? And, and, and so, and so I just, again, like, I'm supportive, very supportive, and I know there's lots of work that's been done already, and I completely respect that work. But, but, but I do, again, I do see that this is a Herculean task.
So I very much appreciate everything that's being said. And actually, what Vice Mayor Combs was talking about is one of the pieces that the Subcommittee has talked about, and one of the reasons why it's very valuable to actually do this more proactively, is so that, and get the education out there. And we've got a number of organizations that have already said that they're interested in working with the city. And more came up with public comments today. So it's really exciting to me to see how many groups are very strongly behind this and interested in helping us make it a success. And part of that will be to do exactly as you're saying, to not wait for things to break, but actually be able to be working with the community and providing education, providing alternatives, providing information so that people actually have a choice before it gets to a crisis when they may not be able to make the change. So this is all part of what we need to do in flushing out more of what each of these pieces, especially the burnout ordinance means, is to actually go and talk with many stakeholders. And Ms. Lucky's been keeping a list, which is getting, again, getting quite extensive. It's really exciting. And work with everyone and the community and find out what is, what will make it work for them and how can we make this successful for everyone. But I think we've got a really excellent start with the Climate Action Plan and a long list of stakeholders who are really interested in this success. And so I'm super excited to get moving on this. And I think the idea of the Facebook funds, it's something that I've talked to a couple people about, and is very exciting opportunity to look and see whether that might be some, a way we can accelerate some of the work to be done. But it's, there's a lot to do, and I think that we've got a super good start and a really good skeleton. And now we need to really fill it in and working with all the stakeholders, working with the community and make it happen. So these goals are, you know, they're aspirational, and they're meant to be aspirational. That's the, the whole purpose of all of this. They are not legally binding, but they are aspirational. If we don't have that aspiration, we're never going to tackle the, the climate crisis. So I'm really excited to be where we are and with all the support. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, and to be fair, Councilmember Combs, I don't think, I don't, I don't think the whole city is with us on 100% electric yet, right? And I think we acknowledge that. I think, and I think everyone would acknowledge that. But if we don't put together a plan to get there to convince people, we'll never get there, right? If we don't figure out, if we don't figure out and tell our partners, our regional partners that we're serious about this and we're trying to figure out how and signal that to them, we'll never get there. And so, so tonight's about trying to get there. And I do want to make it clear, because while we do say it's aspirational, and it's sometimes, and I, and I know Councilmember Nash, who says it agrees exactly with the, I think she, oh, I didn't know she hears, but I'm saying now, while it is aspirational, there is intent to our partners, to our partners and to those, to those communities around us and to those we want to partner with. It's aspirational with true intent. We want to try to figure out how to get there. And we're going to need to engage the community because we're not going to be able to get there without them, but because we know they're not, everyone's not there yet. But, but, but boy, it's, it's exciting to say that we're not going to sit powerless as this crisis continues to develop and not take action locally to go ahead and start really tackling our arms around.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
I just wanted to add to that and what Councilmember Mueller was saying, which I fully agree with. And that's just after, as we're all living through this COVID crisis, the pandemic, it, to me, it's, we are seeing what exponential growth means. It's something which is real to us now, which at least to me, it is much more real now than it was before, where you really do have to tackle things as early as possible and really work at it, make the biggest impact, and stretch. And people will come along, and it will, it's the only way where we're really going to have that impact. And I'm sure you know, if everybody's, if everybody's all happy, then you're not pushing hard enough. We're, you know, we're, this is what we should be doing to make it happen. And we will be reaching out and talking to everyone, and we will be communicating, and we will be pushing them, pushing to get this done because we need it, all the generations need it. The world needs it.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. I agree, and there is a lot going on as far as our climate action. We all supported it as a council during our goal setting, which I really appreciate. We're all on the same page. There was a lot of work done even pre, by our previous council to even get as far as we have. Something very, that's very small, but an annoying piece that hasn't been talked about, and that is leaf blowers. It has been, come up on dialogue on Nextdoor. Ms. Lucky, how soon can that be done as far as, starting with the city not using electric, not using gas leaf blowers? And then eventually, and I know that there was an issue in the past about it actually being something phased, that we phase out throughout the city as far as residential and business use. So how soon can we phase out gas leaf blowers as far as the city using them?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So this has come up numerous times, and I've had conversations with community members too, who, and just throughout the years, just different community members who are both displeased with the odor and the noise and also the environmental impacts of leaf blowers. I think it takes putting forward an ordinance similar to what was done previously at the city and getting that passed, which would be similar work to what we're trying to accomplish with building electrification, EV infrastructure policy. And given the current staff, resources, and capacity, you know, we'd have to evaluate that further and understand what impact. And I, and I'll just, my last point, I'll just, the EQC has discussed this through their conversations with the Climate Action Plan and trying to prioritize which actions would make the most difference in greenhouse gas reductions. And so it was considered in the Climate Action Plan process.
I remember seeing it in there, and so specifically, I'm talking about the city itself. So the employees of the city still use leaf blowers. How soon can we phase out the gasoline leaf blowers that we use as a city to set the standard so that we can move forward and then ask everybody else to stop using gas leaf blowers?
Yeah, and we've been participating in some programs from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District to look at loaning, to test out the equipment. I mean, the technology is new, there's lots of other factors to consider. I probably defer to Public Works to identify their experience with electric leaf blowers and the transition. I know that there are no grants available right now from the air quality district for them, but they are looking to see if, if cities are interested. They did previously offer grants in the past.
Okay. Thank you. But we wouldn't need an ordinance to do that. We can just do that ourselves.
Right, but there would be a cost to transition all of our gas equipment. And I think that's part of the strategy for municipal, phasing out fossil fuels for municipal operations. It could fall under that. And I would probably defer to Ms. Nagaya to talk through how, how much time would be needed to make that transition.
Okay. My, my last question is, I know we received slides from you for sometime in the latter part of the afternoon. Did that include the slides from the EQC Subcommittee as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Carlton, you're on mute. We're still unable to hear you. So I think you'll need to call in.
Can I chime in with a question since, while we're waiting for Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Just for my colleagues on the council, I just want to, are we coalescing around the three items as identified by, by staff as priorities? Or are we coalescing around the six items that were recommended by, by the EQC? I just want to, I don't know, maybe that's clear to everyone and not me, but, but I just wanted to get some sense of where people were landing at regarding that distinction.
Thank you for the question, Vice Mayor Combs. I've been paying attention to the six items from the EQC. I see that as being the, the low-hanging fruit. So that's where I'm at at the moment. And Councilmember Nash had her hand up. And I'm, and Councilmember Carlton, we still cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes! Okay. This has been so frustrating. I'm going to, I had a lot of things to say about this, but I'm going to try and be quick because I have no idea how long this is going to last. Can you, can you still, can you still hear me? Are you there?
Hear you.
Okay, great. I went back and saw, looked, tried to understand where we are in the goals right now. We had a 27% goal by 2020. From what I can tell, we're at about 18.6 a couple of years ago. So when we have these goals, I'm curious to see how, are we actually tracking them? Or how aspirational is this? Because I'd love to have at least every couple of years, a solid report back on how we're meeting the goals. All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So I, I really like what this is saying, and I love, just to give you guys the feedback, on the board of the Peninsula Clean Energy, we've got some programs that we're going to be bringing forward to provide electric bicycles for people that are in underserved families. We're going to be doing a lot of programs to provide more EV chargers, which is critical because the main reason a lot of people are not buying the electric cars is because they don't have a place to charge it, not necessarily the cost of the cars themselves. And if you look at where the, the problems are, a lot of it is the gasoline. And as, as warm and fuzzy as we make our public transit, there are just some people that will always have to have a car, and the best we can do is to make that choice, the easiest choice possible for them to go all-electric. Frankly, I wish we could, I suggested to our city manager, and she said she didn't know if we could, instead of a TOT, I wish we could increase the gasoline tax and, and inspire people, they say, you know, you've got the carrot and the stick, to move away from, from gasoline as, as much as possible. And I would love to go back and review a lot of the, I've, I've never thought we went far enough on some of our, our building codes with regards to requiring people to put in enough chargers for the, the statistics we see on, on people buying and wanting to buy the electric cars. I, just checking in again, can you still hear me? Because you've all frozen.
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
The only problem I have with this is, I get aspirational, aspirational's great. I love it more when we actually have solid benchmarks and solid targets so that we can celebrate successes as we move forward. I also worry a little bit about aspirational, when aspirational goes so far, that it takes one part of the population who maybe isn't quite all there and terrifies them. And we want to get people on board and get them excited about this rather than putting people on the defense. And I worry that saying we're going to get all houses electric, some people are going to react this really to that because of not only the finances, but a whole myriad of obvious things. I would feel more comfortable if we said, let's make sure that all new buildings are completely, let's make sure that we make easier choices for people as they're remodeling their houses. But I wanted to invite, Kara Silver sent us an email talking about even the legality of saying, we want all houses to be electric. Kara, did you want to discuss that or give us further information on the Berkeley legislation? The litigation, I should say?
Thank you. Kara Silver, interim city attorney. So the, there is an issue pending before the district court involving a case filed by the California Restaurants Association against the city of Berkeley that is challenging Berkeley's reach code. And Berkeley's reach code is a little bit different than most of the other cities' reach codes in that instead of regulating the actual appliances, Berkeley regulated, pivoted the provision of gas service altogether in new homes. That particular issue is being litigated now in the district court. We are, we've analyzed the preemption issue in connection with Menlo Park's adoption of the reach code and the way Menlo Park structured the reach code. We don't believe raises the preemption issue. And the, we do though, we have not analyzed the issue in terms of banning gas in existing buildings. And so I think that's still an issue that needs to be looked at. And when we draft an ordinance, we will need to pay attention to that particular issue and look at some, both federal preemption and possible state preemption issues as we would with, with any ordinance of this kind, which is, which there really aren't many models available at this point. We, we, so we would have to investigate those issues a little bit more.
Okay, I have a further question for you. If we're banning all gas, what about the outdoor propane, gas ovens and gas barbecues that people are installing? How would that be impacted by this?
Right, so, and that's a good question. That's, that goes into how you would craft an ordinance. And there, you know, you may want to have exceptions for outdoor barbecues that use propane as opposed to barbecues that are fueled by the, the gas line itself, or you may not. It, you know, those are all policy considerations that we would drill down a little bit deeper when, when going through the outreach process for the actual ordinance itself.
Okay, thanks. So from what you're saying with the litigation, we really don't know how that's going to play out at this point.
We, we, we don't. And it will take, you know, several, several years probably to wind its way through the courts. But as I, as I mentioned, we have analyzed the federal preemption issue in the context of our own reach code. And I think it's, I think it would be a hard argument for the, I think it's going to be hard for the restaurant industry to prevail in that particular case.
Okay, great.
Court decision on that issue.
Okay, great. Thank you. My, my concern in this is, as I say, for, for pretty much all of this plan, I think it's fabulous and I, and I commend everyone who's worked on this. My concern is, you remember how much we went through just in talking about people's stoves, for example? There, some people are passionately attached to gas stoves, probably more so than their water heaters. But I think that there will be backlash and I would rather have people inspired and educated and wanting to get behind this than throwing in something that is aspirational at the cost of people supporting this. I think that saying that every house, every existing house is going to be all electric goes too far. And I, it sounded like Councilmember Combs was beginning to say that. I apologize very frustratingly, I've missed most of this conversation because of my internet, my house has gone down and my system's not working very well. But I'm, other than the language of every existing house, I'm absolutely 100% behind this.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Mueller?
So I think what's really important to understand is, tonight, we're not saying, we're not passing an ordinance making every house 100% electric. And we're not even like, we haven't even started the process in order to have that discussion with the community. And there will 100% be backlash when that, I mean, we cannot be Pollyanna-ish about the fact that when we have this discussion, there's not going to be backlash. There's going to be backlash when we have this discussion initially and we talk about it and we get in there and we roll up our sleeves and we figure out, community, what they're willing to accept. And we're going to have to go through that process. And candidly, we may not be able to get there all the way with the community. It may be, you know, community members may say, we, we, it's, we don't want this, like, but we're willing to go this far. But what we've seen happen, what we saw happen with the reach codes is after we passed the reach codes, other jurisdictions did similar. But then something really important happened. The state of California and the PUC actually came down and said, you know what, local jurisdictions can do this. And there was regulation taking place coming from, from the state of California agencies in support of what the local agencies were starting to do. And all of a sudden, it became more possible for cities to do what we were attempting to do. And it's this public policy kitchen that we're all in. And what we're saying is, the city of Menlo Park wants to embark on making a new cookbook. We want it, we're, we're not saying that the cake's ready to come out, but what we're saying is, we want to embark on getting a new cookbook. And this is what the goal is, where we're going to get to. And we're not sure we can even get there yet, but we're going to invest the money to try to get there. We're going to, we're going to ask other agencies to help us try to get there. We're going to take the time to talk to our community about it. And at the end of the day, I hope my, I hope my cake doesn't go flat. Because you know what, if it does, we're in big trouble. Because the fact of the matter is, we're doing it because it's getting too hot. So, you know, I, there's just no other way to put it. Like, I just think this is the responsible, prudent thing to do is to say, we have to try to move this direction. We're going to talk with the community about it, develop a plan. And when it comes time to actually, you know, pass the ordinance, we'll either have done the work to get the community there and behind, and behind it, or it isn't going to pass. Or it'll pass and not be there very long. But you gotta do the work to get there. And, and, and I, and experience has taught us, if we don't try to do that work, there's less people at the table believing that we can get it done. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
Please get out of here and close the door. I'm having a meeting.
You're not on mute, Councilmember Carlton.
So, totally agree with what Ray said, and I just wanted to make a comment about the metrics. And one of the things, this plan is going to have metrics in it. And in fact, there's a request that there's the progress against the nine metrics identified in the Climate Action Plan be reported to the EQC quarterly and to council annually. So that there will be metrics, this will be followed, we will be working to get real data and really move the, move things. Having said that, as Ray has said, the specifics of what we're doing with the burnout is to be determined. It has not been decided yet. We have, this is not voting, as he said, to have all houses, all residential, 100% electric by 2030. This is the first step, starting to talk about that. But what we do know is, in order to get a handle on climate change and start bending the curve, just like we've done with COVID, we need to take some of these major actions and we need to be working on it. And we have to, we have to give it a try. And we're positioned in a really good place with our community to make this happen and to work with others all over the Bay Area, the state, the nation to do this. Our climate action committee has been reaching out to other states, to other cities, and talking to many, many people, and they are building a coalition. And it is really exciting that we actually have a chance to make an impact. So I really, I hope we can get this passed tonight and really see how far we can take it. And let's, let's make a difference, let's bend that curve.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. To follow up on a question that Vice Mayor Combs asked earlier, is that, are we talking about the entire plan? Are we talking about the EQC Subcommittee? Or are we talking about the staff's recommended plans? And Vice Mayor Combs had his, had his hand up and then Councilmember Mueller.
But I wasn't going to talk about that issue. So if Councilmember Mueller wants to address that issue, then let's go with him and we can come back to me.
Okay. Councilmember Mueller?
Thank you. Thank you both. So I think, so the way that, that I've sort of viewed the three versus sixes, I think walking into the meeting, our professional staff knew how they were going to get three done. And they're saying, we can get three done. I think on the six, I think they, they realize that we, what I would assume is they realize that if we're passing this tonight, you know, we believe in this. But the question that's unclear to me is, what does the extra three come at the expense in a time of constrained resources? And why did they say three versus six? And so what I would actually suggest tonight, just to be prudent on that, is that we would say three, the three staffs recommended, and then say, the council's intent, if, if you guys agree, is that we would try to move toward the three, but bring us back and tell us what the impact that is on other projects in the city and staff resources. Because I don't think it's just a funding issue, I think it's a man, a person power issue, excuse me. So I think we need to sit down and ask them, what is, you know, what's this at the expense at? Because if it's on other priorities that different council members care about, then we probably need to have a policy discussion about that. Because I don't think what professional staff is saying to us is that it's three and never six. It's three and this is the timeline for the other three, given other council priorities. And so having them come back to us and explain how they would get that done, I think is fair.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, so just right off the top, I'm, I'm supportive of that, that approach. I'd also want to, responding to Councilmember Carlton, say like, I share, I think, a lot of your perspective and how you're, you're looking at this. And so I would want to know, you know, is there something that you are comfortable with and what that looks like? And, and I'll share with you sort of my thought process and how I approach it. And I, I think, like, again, is it, some aspects of what we're trying to achieve are incredibly aggressive. But at the core, one, the natural gas infrastructure is antiquated. It is old technology and it is, it is going, it is going out. Now, whether that is soon or whether that is in the midterm or whether that is long term, its days are numbered. And that, that just is, is a fact. And I think that that, that will be a good thing, right? It is not the inefficient and not a, it isn't not efficient, it is an inefficient and dangerous delivery of, of, of energy system. And so that, I think, helps me to become a little bit more comfortable with an aggressive goal. The second issue is that there are a number of communities in this country and around the world that don't have a natural gas infrastructure, certainly not to the extent that we have it, and have very high quality of lives, right? High quality living standards. And so, again, so it is not that, that this, you know, results in some long-term diminution of a quality of life. Certainly, it is, it is change. It is, it is monumental change and I don't mean to, to, to suggest that it, it's not. But, but again, I don't know that, there are lots of people who would, who would sort of disagree with the idea that, that, again, the natural gas infrastructure is not, is not where you want to be putting your money. It is, its days are numbered. And I think the question is, is like, how numbered? And maybe it is, it will be a long time, but, but in that sense, I am able to get a little more comfortable with, with what we're doing here because I think the direction is right, right? We can, we can, you know, sort of disagree on, on like, how fast we should be going, but, but I think that there is a general agreement that the direction headed is right.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Nash and then Councilmember Carlton.
Just to add to what Vice Mayor Combs was saying, which was spot on, is the addition that having gas in our houses, the natural gas, actually is a health hazard. There are more children in, who have asthma in homes with natural gas. It's something that is an equity issue as well. And we need to make sure that we can, that we, that we are helping everyone in the community get healthier and the community itself be safer by, with the natural gas infrastructure. For example, with what happened, oh my gosh, I just forgot, it wasn't Daily City, anyway. But it's, it is, PG&E is, is actually in favor of moving away from gas because of the infrastructure issues that Vice Mayor Combs said. And in addition, there is a health hazard. There, it is, there is a health benefit to moving to electricity.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton and then Councilmember Mueller.
I hear what you're saying. I'm not disagreeing with you. And this is, it's, I'm just trying to digest this in my own heart and my own head. I was one of the founding people from the very first meeting in Redwood City of Peninsula Clean Energy. Got an electric car. I have been pushing that. I don't think we've gone far enough on helping people on all levels with electrical cars. This is an area that's, that's extremely close to my heart. I was vice chair of the Environmental Legislative Committee for the California League of Cities for a while. It's not something that I take lightly because it is something I care a lot about. I just have, I'm really, really, really having trouble coming to terms with telling a group of people who do not realize that it's aspirational because it's something the city council passed. When we say, you, we're coming after you. All houses are going to be electric by this date. I would feel more comfortable if we said, all new houses and houses being renovated will be electric with a view to all houses being electric in the future. But, but basically saying the same thing, but doing it in a less aggressive way that, that doesn't frighten people, that, that helps people get on board. I, I don't know, as they say, I understand and agree with what you're saying. I'm just wrapping my head around, for me, it's really an aggressive thing. I get that it's aspirational, but I, I think it goes too far in aspiration. I wish it was more of an explanation of that aspiration. aspiration. I don't know if that makes sense, but I, I just have a lot of problems with saying, by X date, every house in our city is going to be electric, because it's not going to happen. I'd rather, I'd rather have something a lot more real that we have as an, as an aspiration. I see Ray's got his hand up with a smile, so I'm happy to let Ray speak.
Councilmember Mueller?
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton, I know how much you care about this issue. So I know, I mean, you, you've cared about environmental issues from your, your entire tenure at council. I would, though, reframe, though, what, how we're approaching this. And I don't think what we're doing is we're saying to Menlo Park residents, your house will be this by X, by 2030. I think we're saying, I think what we're saying to them is, we are going to embark on a planning process to try to figure out a way to figure out with you and other agencies and experts, how we can try to reach this goal together. And that's a different thing. We're not saying we're imposing this on you tonight. We're not passing an ordinance tonight. We're not, we're not doing anything, actually, we're not doing anything to any resident in Menlo Park tonight, except saying that we're embarking on a planning process that we want you to be a part of. I also would suggest to my colleagues that it may be that, that natural gas may not go away completely. We may discover that there is reasons, very good reasons, to have some microgrid backup solutions in specific areas. I mean,
A microgrid backup solution?
Oh, there's an echo. I mean, there's, the, the fact of the matter is, is that what we're doing tonight is we're saying, look, we understand that where we are in present day, as we approach our energy solutions, is antiquated and ancient. And in Menlo Park, we're going to take the responsibility to make the investment to move us forward, and we're going to do it with our residents. We're going to, we, we recognize at the outset tonight, even in this discussion and doing it,
Even in this discussion.
We are going to have a, we're going to need to have a very strong engagement with the community to get their support for this. And I'd suggest, actually, that, that's one of the reasons why we have to do this planning process. All of the, all the apprehension and feeling of pushback, and how people accept this, and all of that, that's like, oh, it's right there in front of us and blocking us. That's why we have to do this planning process and invest in doing it. Because otherwise, it's this giant roadblock to ever getting there. We have to go ahead and make that investment and start that engagement process and figure how we get from, how we get from here to there with our residents. And that's, that's really what this is about to me. Secondarily, finally, you know, in my discussion with Councilmember Combs about how we would frame this for staff, it doesn't necessarily need to be, you know, this or that. But it also could be, what else do you need in order to do this with your other priorities? So I also would add that to framing that, as we figure out six versus three. So, but, but I, you know, I think there's amongst all of us, there's a recognition, this is, this is going to be really hard, and I just don't want it to get lost in our debates tonight, that we all don't recognize that we are going to need to have a discussion with community members, that there is going to be community pushback, that we're not going to get away with just imposing this on people, that we're all going to have to work together. But this process is starting that engage, starting that really important planning.
Thank you. Is it possible to put the slides up so that we can stay, there's the three recommendations from staff, and then the six recommendations from the Subcommittee, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you. And Councilmember Nash, you had your hand up.
I just wanted to mention that we reflect on the reason why we're here and doing all of this, is because we, because of climate, the climate crisis, and the fact that Menlo Park is threatened by climate change. And this is, the reason why we're doing this is to try to tackle that. And so while we're just baiting all the nuances and the different pieces, as we should, we also need to keep in mind the reason why we're actually even talking about this.
Thank you. And, and thank you, Ms. Lucky, for putting that up there, because I had the, I had the other three up. So I was focusing on that, which is why I said, well, that, that's, that one I didn't support, but now that I have the correct ones. So I appreciate you putting that up for clarity. And, and I appreciate, and Councilmember Carlton, I hope you can still hear us, I don't see you on screen anymore. But I appreciate the clarification from Councilmember Mueller and also Councilmember Nash. And I really appreciate all of the work that has gone into the presentation, especially the area that has the highest impact. And a part of that, for me, is that it just inequitable land use policy. So, you know, it's, it's always been a flood zone. It's not a new flood zone. And so I, I really appreciate the attention that's being given to that area and prioritizing it, because whatever happens over there will have a ripple effect throughout the rest of the city. So I, I really appreciate that. And the three items that are up, okay, oh, you did a split screen. Thank you. Okay. So, so that we can move forward on this topic, Councilmember Carlton, can you, are you with us and can hear us?
Can you, can you hear me speak?
Yes.
I'm hearing spirit, then.
Okay. Thank you. So we have the city staff's recommendation on the left, and we have our EQC Subcommittee's recommendations on the right. And the resolution that is on our agenda is to adopt both.
Sorry, pardon me, Madam Mayor. May I just clarify a few things? So I just want to make the first clarification, that all six strategies are being incorporated into the, what is being recommended by staff is to start work on three of the strategies. And we're into ready for public engagement. So the ones that are being delayed to look at either next year or a year after is really reducing the vehicle miles traveled, 25% reduction goal. And that's because there are four projects currently going that do require a senior and executive staff guidance and support. So even, even if we do get contractors to support this work, or additional, and this would require additional staff, because even the frozen positions will need to take care of existing priorities and existing work. So it would require reshuffling work that's already underway, or hiring additional staff, and still also impacting executive staff. So that's the rationale for delaying some of these to, to move forward. Other projects that do support the action, particularly for the VMT. And then for the number two, we're setting citywide goals for increasing EVs and decreasing gasoline sales. The conversation is really about, can a regional agency help lead this effort? Because it does involve marketing, a marketing campaign to residents. And so that would reach beyond the city's boundary. So it would be beneficial if the county or Peninsula Clean Energy potentially lead that effort, and the city could support that leadership effort. And it did have conversations with the Environmental Quality Commission sub, CAP Subcommittee, that this is maybe an area where the EQC could really support staff on this effort by influencing and talking to Peninsula Clean Energy or the county to take on this. And it could be an item for discussion for the Environmental Quality Commission. So all six strategies are going forward, but we're really looking to start work on the number one, three, and five.
Okay. Thank you for the, the clarification. And, and I am going to do this in this moment. We need to take a five-minute break. We will be right back. Thank you. Hello, members of the city council. I'm just checking in on city council member Carlton. Are you with us?
I'm here. You just can't see me.
Okay. Thank you. So with the, the city council back on our virtual dais, Mayor Taylor, you may reconvene the meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Heron. And we have Councilmember Nash.
So I'm ready to make a motion if others are ready for that.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, it's fine. I just, I did want to make the point to Councilmember Carlton, that people really are severely worried about their gas ranges. That's something that people, that people will probably fight for in the process. So they might get to keep them. So at the end of this planning process, we just, we just have to start doing the work to see what we can get accomplished toward reaching that goal. So that's, that's, that's all I'd say.
I, Vice Mayor Combs?
No, please go. I don't think you.
Okay. So, so, thank you. And with the, with Ms. Lucky's clarifying which items on here, I believe I was on the wrong page, because there's a list of three on two different slides. So she said that it's numbers one, three, and five, which are the extremely progressive actions, as far as the all-city buildings being electric by 2030. I support the other three, items two, four, and six. And so I didn't know if anybody had any thoughts, or they just supported the one, three, and five. And they're not on the screen, so I'm not sure if you have the slides available. Councilmember Nash?
So are you saying you support all six of them? But the EQC cap subcommittee and the City Council cap subcommittee have both met and did advise what the plan has recommendation. And there's an agreement on it, but it does not include the full EQC endorsement on that.
Councilmember Nash?
So the way that the one, three, and five were chosen is, first of all, one was chosen because of the magnitude of the potential greenhouse gas reductions. And that it is a very significant way to make a difference. If you look at, on the slide and look at what the greenhouse gas reductions are for each of the different items, you will see that the number one is by far the most significant reduction and will have the greatest impact. And then beyond that, I believe four was, which is the second most, the second largest, of course, is, was not put on the list because of it's a little bit more complex. And the cap subcommittee had actually recommended that that one go to, get more information from the Complete Streets Commission and then come back. But that we get, basically, one, three, and five were chosen because of the size of the greenhouse gases reductions and also our ability to control it with municipal operations and set an example. And I'm hoping that if I'm getting anything wrong, that the EQC subcommittee, someone, or Rebecca, will jump in. And then the others were more complex for one reason or another, or, and so that's why the recommendation that I was going to actually make and was, which is coming from the cap subcommittee, was on number two to actually ask EQC to continue to work on it. And number, I have more word, text, well, essentially, actually, number two, please empower EQC to work with staff on setting goals for EVs and gasoline sale reductions for the community, tracking progress and marketing the goals to the community. So that was how that one was going to be, the suggestion was how that one was going to proceed forward. Number four was, please consider expressing support for a 25% reduction in BMT and requesting that the Complete Streets Commission be empowered to present strategies to council for achieving the goal. And then on number six, that we request quarterly updates from Public Works on adaptation plans being developed at the county level. So that was sort of going to balance the other three items that were not put forward, recommended by staff. EQC feels strongly about all of them, but.
So sorry to interrupt you, Councilmember Nash. So the two lists are, they relate to one another? The way you just read it up.
Okay, so, well, the idea is that the EQC had proposed the list of all six items. Staff came back and perhaps Ms. Lucky wants to speak to this more, but basically, when they evaluated what was doable, given our resources and also what other partnerships would be required to accomplish two, four, and six, they recommended one, three, and five. But with the EQC subcommittee has also said, let's not lose track of two, four, and six, and has these other recommendations as to how to keep those moving forward. Two being with the EQC, four being with the Complete Streets Commission, and six being updates from Public Works because there is a countywide project. The county-level resiliency, JPA.
Okay, okay. Thank you for the clarification. And Councilmember Carlton, we can't see you, but I believe you are unmuted.
Yes. So as I understood, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor Taylor, you said you supported two, three, four, six. I think that the goal of moving all of our municipal operations to electricity is also a good one. There may be instances where, I don't know, say, a cherry picker isn't made all-electric yet. But I think that moving our city fleet to electric is also a goal that I would support absolutely.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Mueller?
As a point of clarity, are we talking about now what we're instructing staff to, directing staff that we want to move forward with first? Or are we talking about what we're comfortable with approving tonight in the plan? Because my impression of what we're talking about now is what we're talking about prioritizing first as opposed to what portions of the plan that we, that we're comfortable with as opposed to others. So I just wanted clarity. I just wasn't sure what exactly the framework around the discussion was.
I appreciate the question, Councilmember Mueller. And I was, I had the wrong three items up in the way that the information was presented. It sounded to me that Ms. Lucky was saying, pick, these three were chosen when essentially all six are on the list, it's just prioritizing three. And then now seeing the trimmed-down list that I believe used to be 77 and is now six that the EQC put forward, and then how they're all interrelated, but initially because both the, both the recommendations were not listed together, at least not side-by-side, it didn't make sense the way it was presented earlier. So it was more clarification for me. So, you're welcome. So at this point, not to rush to a vote, Vice Mayor Combs?
Well, I was gonna ask Councilmember Nash if that was a motion or was that the foundation of a motion that she was trying to make in her earlier comment?
So just as a point of clarity, we did have a motion by City Councilmember Nash to approve as-is.
I did?
Yes. Okay, we can, that's why I was coming on, just to make sure that we were still there, but if not, then that's fine. Thank you.
Mayor Taylor, may I speak?
Yes.
So, in trying to explain where my heart and my head is in this, we talk about aspirational goals. I would rather have an inspirational goal that inspires people to want to get on board than aspirational. And I believe that the statement, convert 100% of existing buildings to all-electric by 2030, it breaks my heart, but I'll have to abstain on that. I believe it's divisive and it's not good language. You know, we can change it to support the conversion of electric buildings to all-electric, you know, but just convert, I think, is divisive language. And I just can't, I just can't do it. I really think it's divisive and counterproductive.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Mueller?
Vice Mayor Carlton, to address your concerns, would you, because there's a difference between this and the staff slide. The staff slide said explore, explore conversion as opposed to convert.
I 100% agree with that.
Okay, so if we change that to explore conversion to 100%, and I'll go one step further to allay your concerns, what if we said explore conversion of 95% to give people the ability to think that there's, that there may be a 5% wiggle room for some sort of, some sort of, that we recognize that there may be, there may be some extenuating circumstance. So we said explore 95% conversion of existing buildings to electric by 2030 is the planned goal. Would that be satisfactory?
That makes more sense to me. And as an example, we've already gone through cases with Charlton where they're doing biotech and different research that required gas. So, and that's an existing building. So to me, that's a realistic thing that we can talk about and support.
All right, and then I would support, I would support that, and I'm happy to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I was gonna ask if Councilmember Nash was supportive of that as amendment to her motion, but I'm remembering she didn't make a motion. So could I make a motion adopting Councilmember Mueller's language with regards to that, the electric building recommendation? And then all of the, in adopting all the other aspects of the staff recommendation?
Councilmember Nash, is that a second?
No, I actually wanted to, could I speak for a minute?
Yes.
So I am fine with what Councilmember Mueller said. What I wanted to try, and the reason why I had not made the motion before, is I was trying to get in the three actions that I mentioned into the motion. And so I don't care who makes the motion, how it's seconded, I would just like to have the three actions, if possible, into the motion. And so I'm.
I would be supportive if you want to amend the motion I made to add those actions.
That would be great. Should I read them or just, Judy, do you have them from before? Or what would be the best way to do that?
Yeah, so if you could just let me know the verbiage used for the three actions. I already have the verbiage from Councilmember Mueller regarding exploring.
Okay, and that, actually, I don't have the exact words, but so the EQC would work with staff on setting goals for EVs and gasoline sale reductions for the community, tracking progress and marketing the goals to the community. And then, so that's action number two. Action number four is, let's see, support a 25% reduction in BMT and request that the Complete Streets Commission is empowered to present strategies to council for achieving that goal. And for action number six, that Public Works provides a quarterly update on adaptation plans being developed at the county level.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, so the motion by Vice Mayor Combs with a friendly amendment and second by City Councilmember Nash, this is for item F1 regarding the adoption of Resolution 6575 to include the modified language as stated by City Councilmember Mueller as well as the included language for numbers two, four, and six by City Councilmember Nash. So by roll call vote, City Councilmember Carlton. She may have lost a connection, so I will come back to her vote. City Councilmember Mueller?
You're on mute.
We can't hear. I apologize, but I missed a detail. We're saying all six, or, well, I know that you have the amended language for those two, but we're saying, are we saying three and then they're going backwards with the plan? Or we're saying, I sort of missed, I apologize. I missed it.
No problem. So what I have down, and please correct me if I've not taken it down correctly, it is a motion by Vice Mayor Combs to adopt Resolution 6575, including the language provided by City Councilmember Mueller regarding exploring conversion to up 95% as well as including language to the three actions, which number two is the EQC to work with staff in setting goals on EV and gas sale reductions and tracking that progress and goals, and the goals of the community. For number four, support a 25% reduction of BMT and empower the Complete Streets Commission to present strategies to City Council. And for number six, have Public Works provide quarterly updates of county, the plans at the county level.
Okay, yeah, my vote, my vote is yes.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Heron?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton is asking to be unmuted.
She is not on mute on our end. I do see an offline signal next to her name. It could be that she's lost some bandwidth. But I don't have her muted. So, City Councilmember Carlton, if you're able to hear me, if you can send your vote via question or chat until we can get you back online, we can take it that way as well. So Councilmember Nash, your vote, please.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And I'm still pending a response from City Councilmember Carlton. Give me one moment. I'm gonna call Councilmember Carlton from my cellphone just so we can at least get this vote in the record.
Hi.
Hi, Councilmember Carlton.
I can hear you, and I cannot unmute myself.
So, City Councilmember Carlton, if you're able to hear me, if you can send your vote via question or chat until we can get you back online, we can take it that way as well. Okay. So, Councilmember Nash, your vote, please.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And I'm still pending a response from City Councilmember Carlton. Give me one moment. I'm gonna call Councilmember Carlton from my cellphone just so we can at least get this vote in the record.
Hi.
Hi, Councilmember Carlton.
I can see you, I can hear you, and I cannot unmute myself. I wanted to ask, yes, but I was just asking in terms of priority, why EV sales and EV chargers, they should be together as one priority? And I was just asking if that was possible.
So we could, I believe, offer that as a friendly amendment to the City Council. City Council, were you able to hear?
At least give direction or something like that. Because the two seem to go absolutely hand-in-hand. Because the two seem to go absolutely hand in hand rather than having them separate.
So are we talking about adding two and three together? I just want to make sure I understand what, what the suggestion is.
Are you there?
Yes, we can hear you, Councilmember Carlton.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
So Vice Mayor Combs, can you restate your question, please?
So, yeah, I just want to understand that, that are you suggesting that we essentially add items two and three and make that just one single goal? Did we drop her?
Yes, it looks like the phone call was disconnected. Oh, the joys of technology.
I mean, I don't have any objection to that suggestion, but again, I would, would ask for either the Subcommittee or someone from staff to weigh in on, on why they're, they're separate. I'm sure there's something that I'm missing and, and why they are separated and not together. But I'm, as I sit here right now, not opposed to that suggestion.
Mr. Pogaros?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If the council is comfortable, I think it would be helpful for staff to put all this together and put it, bring it back as a consent agenda item so you, so we don't miss anything. Additionally, we want to make sure that we're clear on the expectations of some of the additions that have been made in this motion and the impact that that might have on staff resources. So we just want to get it all clear and straight and minimize opportunity for miscommunication.
Just to let everyone know, I'm back online, I can hear you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. And thank you, Mr. Pogaros. Councilmember Nash?
So I wanted to explain that, two things. One is that the reason why the two, why the two EV goals are separate is because one is a marketing exercise and goal setting, which is the setting goals for increasing EVs and decreasing gas sales as opposed to a policy and a program which is expanding access to EV charging. So they do work together, but they are actually separated purposefully because they are different types of goals and therefore the metrics will be different as to how we can measure them. And if they are combined, then it would be more difficult to actually measure our progress.
I would just say, so I'm, I'm fine with that explanation and so I'm fine with the motion staying as is.
I'm, I'm fine with that, too. I understand. I just want to make sure that they both happen.
Yeah, so, and.
Go ahead, Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if there's, if there's anything we can quickly clarify for Mr. Pogaros so that we can actually complete this tonight?
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. I don't, I don't, I mean, it's the council's decision whether you'd like to move forward. I, just listening to the discussion, there are, there were additional requests that were added to the resolution or added to the motion that we as staff have not explored fully and we don't fully understand what it takes to make the quarterly reporting, what it will take to, with the Complete Streets working on the VMT. And so, you know, of course, we'll do what we can to make everything work, but it would be great to have an opportunity just to digest everything that's been discussed this evening.
Okay.
That makes sense. Good. Thank you, Mr. Pogaros. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm supportive of, yeah, I think the request from staff is valid, but then just so then, should this current process still end in a, a vote and maybe in an addendum to the motion would also be that like this will come back as a consent, a consent item on a future meeting? Or is Mr. Pogaros saying we shouldn't, we shouldn't end this current discussion in an official vote and they're gonna sort of digest what they've heard and sort of present it back to us and there's no need for a vote here? That's just my question.
Mr. Pogaros?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I would, if the council's comfortable moving forward with the motion this evening, I think that's appropriate. And then what we just want to make sure is we'll bring it back for reconfirmation. So the vote will stand if nothing happens with the reconfirmation, it is what it is, but then that gives the council to correct staff if we miss something.
You had two hands up. Thank you, Mr. Pogaros. Councilmember Mueller and then Councilmember Nash.
I was actually gonna say the opposite. I was actually gonna say, why don't we approve it the other way and then have staff, staff come back to us with the three amendments, but I'll, but after hearing what Mr. Pogaros said, I'll leave it up to Councilmember Nash because it was her motion to consider that and do what she feels comfortable with. But from where I'm sitting, I just want to make sure that we pass something tonight and we're not looking at like a revisiting the matter just to go over again because this was a long and detailed discussion. We have other work to do. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
So, thank you, Councilmember Mueller. I think I'm, have the same sort of thought. Mr. Pogaros, if we were to just go ahead with the, taking out the three actions that I added, would you feel comfortable with that? And then, so we just have a straight, a straight resolution as is and then staff comes back for those three actions? Would that be more comfortable? Ms. Lucky did have those actions ahead of time. She's, just so you know.
Yes, no, that would be great. And also if the council wants to amend the, make the amendment that Councilmember Mueller and Councilmember Carlton agreed to on the conversion, I think that that, that's clear enough. Thank you.
Okay, wish me luck. The motion on the floor is made by Vice Mayor Combs, seconded by City Councilmember Nash, and this is to approve Resolution 6575 with the additional language proposed by City Councilmember Mueller regarding exploring the conversion of 95% and then directing staff to return with the three actions as described by City Councilmember Nash. Wonderful. So by roll call vote, Councilmember Carlton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mueller? Councilmember Nash?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you, council. We did it. One more item. So the next item on the agenda is item F2, add institutional bias reform as a top priority for city staff 2020, 2021, and provide input to staff on how to address police. To introduce this item is our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Nick Pogaros.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. Nick Pogaros, Assistant City Manager. I just wanted to quickly introduce this item. Tonight, we're seeking city council direction to prioritize a multi-year organizational effort to review opportunities to reform institutional bias that is, that is embedded in city laws, policies, operations, and organizational culture. We come here this evening following the council's robust discussion during the goal-setting process. At that time, our notes indicated that the council was going to discuss at greater length a new priority for 2020, 21 to elevate the conversation on racial equity. Of course, the, the goal-setting process was interrupted by COVID-19, pandemic health crisis. It literally turned our operations upside down, as we all know at this point. The financial crisis that was, that resulted from the pandemic then led to a number of budget cuts, layoffs, and significant transition in our city leadership team with the, with the elimination of the Community Development Director position, the Admin Services Director position, the Community Services Director position, and now with the resignation or the retirement of our police chief. There's been a great deal of change over the last several months. Now we're focusing on rebuilding the organization and we see this as an opportune time to review the fabric of our organization to confirm, to confirm that it's in line with the values and priorities of the city council as a reflection of values and priorities of the The staff recommends that the council take action on this particular item. There are three opportunities identified in the staff report. The first, regardless of which direction the council provides us this evening, there will be a heavy emphasis on training and, and retaining the appropriate professional expertise necessary to move the conversation forward. I would also like to add that concurrent with the COVID-19 pandemic, as we are all aware, the, the national dialogue on systemic racism and police use of force has, has grown and has, has, did, did, did result in a number of public comments from the, to the council at recent council meetings. The city attorney has provided attachment aid to the report that transmits this item that outlines a number of police reform opportunities. I do want to add in that, that some of the light items listed in the city attorney's report, as well as perhaps some of the direction the council may give us tonight, it may require or will likely require some legal analysis just to confirm that we have all our ducks in order. So the city attorney, or the interim city attorney and police chief are available for questions, but we wanted to keep the presentation short so the council could focus its discussion. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pogaros, for the information. And considering the time, so I would like to take public comment unless the council has any follow-up questions. Okay. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, for any member of the public wishing to provide a public comment on the current item F2, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I will have the opportunity to open up your microphone and you can then address the city council. So at this time, we have a few hands raised. Our first public speaker is going to be Lynn Bramlett. Lynn, I've unmuted you. If you would like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Good evening, council. I concur that our city needs to elevate the conversation on racial equity and make institutional bias reform a top priority. I will concentrate my remarks in reference to category one and three in the staff report. The first category was elevate the conversation on racial equity. I do consider the ideas too slow, too vague, and too few. I am disturbed that the first few years, the focus is on training. The training is also extremely expensive at $400 per registered student. And then years three to five lists more training. And then what I consider a very vague idea of process reengineering and organizational change. These vague terms aren't defined and the staff report lacks examples of what process reengineering and organizational change could look like. I'm also concerned that in five years, there could be a completely new council and the racial equity conversation could be scrapped entirely. Instead, I think we need a lot more specific, starting with year one. One I would like to see is the goal of creating a more diverse workforce. I think it's more than time to compile data on the demographics of the city staff workforce, especially with so many vacancies that we heard about earlier, especially at the senior level and the supervisory level. The data can then be compared with the general population in Menlo Park and areas of concern would then be identified along with goals. Related to that, it would be good to gather information about the current city culture regarding diversity and inclusion. I will now move on to category three, institutional bias. I propose a detailed examination of the Connect Menlo process and outcomes as a case study, much like the Harvard Business School students might do. I believe that a rigorous examination of Connect Menlo would reveal many specific areas that demonstrate institutional bias. And I think from the specifics, we would see many specific areas that needed, quote, "reengineering" and in what ways we needed organizational change. So I think actually that would provide a very useful exercise to getting to the heart of some tangible outcomes. And just like we heard tonight from the outstanding EQC Subcommittee, our volunteer commissions could help, other volunteers could come forward. Finally, I do want to applaud the council and staff for bravely facing these issues and for bringing forth tonight's staff report that I never expected to see in Menlo Park, and I mean that respectfully.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter is going to be Adina Levin. Adina, you are off mute and able to address the city council at this time.
Good evening, council members. Thank you very much for bringing this forward. And I am speaking to the letter from Menlo Together on this topic where we're definitely supportive of the direction of the, of training and organizational self-assessment with partners like GARE. We support the measures to bring forward the Eight Can't Wait campaign and rubber bullets, but we think that this is an initial set of steps towards broader accountability and not the end of the story. In police accountability, we support gathering data on police stops as is being, it sounds like, started and we should not wait for a state law to finish. That on the peace officer decertification, that also depends on the officer to have been convicted of misconduct and were already terminated. And there's challenges in how to terminate someone or remove, so we recommend a deeper look on how to terminate people that are engaged in misconduct. We do support a public safety commission, as in 3A and Attachment A. We're very concerned about reports from neighbors in East Palo Alto about mutual aid and want the city to investigate those complaints from our neighbors in East Palo Alto. Very troubled about what might be happening in our names and on our budget, and also urge the city to adopt a policy where cameras are used in all interaction, both within and without the safety. And last, but not at all least, we support the direction to have robust community outreach, but that focuses not only as policing as is conducted, but considering public safety more bodily with opportunities to restructure and reallocate funding to address public safety issues such as substance abuse, mental health, domestic violence, and so on, in ways that involve service providers other than police and using our budget differently. The staff report cites a model currently used in Eugene, and there are many other cities right now pursuing this path in the wake of recent black in the wake of recent Black Lives Matter protests. And so we would strongly support a community process as well as a detailed analysis to figure out where our resources should go to improving policing and where it should go towards improving public safety by, you know, supporting our community and addressing emergencies in ways that do not involve police officers with weapons. Thank you very much for taking on and moving forward with this very important topic. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public comment is coming from Karen Grove. Karen, you are off mute and able to address the city council at this time. Karen, we're not able to hear you just yet. Karen Grove. Okay, Karen, I will come back to you in just a couple of minutes here. Our next public commenter will be Pamela Jones. Pamela, you are off mute. If you can address the city council at this time.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Combs, council members Nash, Carlton, Mueller, and to the staff. And thank you for bringing the first of multiple conversations regarding this issue. According to the staff report definition of institutionalized bias from Encyclopedia Britannica, "An example of institutionalized biased practice that works to systematically disadvantage a certain group of residents is how our staff chose to communicate with the residents of Menlo Park. The creation and maintaining a one-size-fits-all approach to ensuring all residents receive most current information appears to be based on certain assumptions. These assumptions are made without consideration of whether or not all residents have access to reliable internet, email, smartphone, member of Nextdoor, or through an up-to-date phone number through the San Mateo County Elections Office. Inclusive communication has been included in every survey of the Bellhaven neighborhood since 1999. Residents have consistently requested to be included in Menlo Park's outreach with specifics to the city and within the Bellhaven neighborhood. The most recent survey in 2014 produced a commitment by the city to produce a regular Menlo Park Bellhaven News email, which began in 2016. Since March 11th declaration of local emergency, Bellhaven residents have received 26 alerts, while the Menlo Park City News has sent 32 alerts to the rest of the city. Since residents have to sign up for individual alerts they wish to receive, there's no guarantee that Bellhaven residents receive Menlo Park news, such as a weekly digest or any other alerts, unless they're aware of additional information is included that may not be found in the Bellhaven News. Whether an oversight or a product of institutionalized bias, it appears how staff has interpreted TIERs' public engagement framework has been unsuccessful in addressing communication through multiple platforms and methodology, including mailers. The demonstrated inability to address institutionalized racism as applied to inclusive and dynamic communication requires a different approach that includes willingness to admit what is not working and a deep commitment to change. This is only one example of many of the challenges that we are facing, and this conversation must be driven by experts in the field. As Albert Einstein so adaptively said, "No problem can be solved from the same level of consciousness that created it." So I strongly urge you to have a report that is based on experts in the field, not what is what is understood by the staff and that has created the problem. Without that, we would not be even having this discussion. Institutionalized racism, as stated, comes from within the institution. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. I'm going to return to Karen Grove. Karen, you are off mute and able to address the city council at this time.
Thank you, thank you. I would like to really commend the city council and staff for taking this on. I appreciate that you heard the community who are suggesting this work. And I want to speak, I want to second everything Adina said about the police reform in particular. Those are really, really thoughtful comments, and I am also part of Menlo Together, but she just articulated it all very well and succinctly. I want to address the sort of institutional organizational change from Menlo Park. And I want to sort of explain that while the staff report may seem like it's too little, too slow, those are the right steps. And those are guided by the Government Alliance for Race and Equity. When you have a system that is so innately biased, and it's not the fault of the particular staff who are there, we all swim in these racialized waters that is our country and our society. So it's a big effort to change. And the first thing everybody needs is a common vocabulary and a common understanding of the system. And and that's why it starts with training. It also goes to the source of power first. So it starts with city council, higher-level staff, and the next time, and then it goes down from there, and it gets to community so that everybody has a common language, because I think we share a lot of common values, but we don't have the same analysis. We don't have the same history. We learn different history in school and in our childhood and in our professional upbringings than is taught by GARE, and then that is factual. So I think we need that training, and we will get farther and more quickly if we start slowly and thoroughly. So I commend the staff for their recommendation. I'm impatient as well, but I think these are the steps we need to take, and it's a worthy investment. I would ask not what can we not do if we do this? I would ask what would it take to do this in conjunction with everything else we are doing? Because doing this will make us better at everything we're going to do, will make us not have to go back and redo it. So please move forward. Please embrace this wholeheartedly, and thank you for starting the process.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter is going to be Norma R. Norma, you are off mute and able to address the city council at this time.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, it's me again. First, I'd like to thank you for providing so much-needed transparency with exactly how the Facebook funds are being used. The staff report clearly shows us that all the Facebook funds are spent on the Community Response Team, also known as the Beat For Police. As I stated before, I want to call on the council to explore reallocating the funds designated for safety towards other uses, which is one of the medium-term goals proposed. Thank you, Mueller, for considering using those funds to fight climate change. I hope you do more than paying the lip service. And absolutely thank you, Mayor Taylor, for actually acting to move these funds by proposing to buy air quality monitors last year. I would love to hear why that wasn't allowed, given that last year the fires were a real threat to safety. The funds that goes to the police should be instead spent on fighting climate change, providing affordable housing, transportation, road upkeep, pretty much anything that isn't policing to actually help the community. I think the council needs to invest in all Menlo Park residents, not just those who live on the right side of the 101. As callers before me have noted, not just today, but in previous council meetings, police do not increase safety. They do not stop crime. They only show up after crime has been committed if they aren't part of the crime already. So even though you are endorsing the Obama pledge and exploring Eight Can't Wait, it is the bare minimum. Both initiatives are essentially public relations projects that make it seem like concrete changes are happening when nothing in fact changes. Last Thursday, the Palo Alto Human Relations Commission had a generative conversation about police reform, where a non-sublimanean of Policy Link clearly stated that police reform and Eight Can't Wait policies do not work, and that nothing has worked to reduce racial bias in policing. The only way to decrease police violence is to literally decrease contact between the public and police by reducing the police footprint. In the staff report, it is reported that the public had over 40,000 instances of contact with the police. What if we had none? I know this will be hard to do overnight, but consider not filling police vacancies through attrition and diverting the Facebook money to meet community needs by funding social services, especially through fighting climate change. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter is going to be Edwin Magna Lopez. Edwin, you are off mute and able to address the city council at this time.
Thank you. Good evening, city council. I would just like to say that the earlier conversation on the Climate Action Plan, I thought went really great. But as far as the reform part goes, I kind of just wanted to reiterate what I wrote in the questions. Imagine this: A police officer is harassing citizens and has history of being a bad racist cop, but is then snatched up from the East Palo Alto Police Department. So he moves to the neighboring city and not only terrorizes that community, but the old community that he was supposed to leave. An officer known to racially profile citizens and various forms of misconduct is practically given a pay raise and a go-ahead to continue this behavior. A police officer that is known to be bad needs to be looked at incredibly serious, especially when hiring from a neighboring department, because that is a position that must be trusted, and someone with a street like that is someone that definitely cannot be trusted again. This story is reality, of course, and he goes by the name of Ed Sores. I see the department is letting go of some of their officers, but not the one the community actually needs out. I know these cops are earning way too much. It would probably help with your budget crisis, right, wouldn't it? If you let go of some of the the police officers and the budget that is given to them by Facebook. And it's so apparent how Facebook doesn't care about this community if they put the money in, especially for the security and the police, instead of the community problems and the things that are going on. It's ridiculous how Palo Alto and Menlo Park and Facebook itself are able to create such enormous amounts of wealth and such disparity is seen throughout all of these communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter is coming from Kevin Gallagher. Kevin, you're off mute and able to address the city council at this time.
Thank you. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome. Hi again, everyone. I read through the the report that was attached here. It was quite lengthy, so I really appreciate the work that was done to come up with that. I thought the list of suggested actions by community members that started on page F2.5 was helpful to see. I really appreciated that those ideas were collected and organized, and I hope they'll be seriously considered. I am a little concerned with why this agenda, this agenda item and report used the phrase institutional bias and not institutional racism. I'm definitely open to the possibility that there's something there I'm either not realizing or not understanding. But it does make me wonder whether we're serious and genuine about dealing with racism, just to not have it in the name. The bare minimum required of us, obviously, is to, you know, just understand what's going on here, what's happening in our community. If we can acknowledge what's happening, if we can at least put a name to it, that makes me skeptical that we'll be able to fix it. So yeah, that was just something that was a little concerning and that I was at least curious about why that happened. I really appreciated the inclusion of information about the quote-unquote "Facebook funding." I hadn't seen those documents before, so that was helpful. In past meetings, I think there was some confusion stated about how much of that funding has been spent and on what. And from my read of it, it looks like all of the money so far, which was around $195,000 in fiscal year 2018-19 and $1.7 million in fiscal year 2019-20, has been spent on law enforcement. And for me, it's, that's just not an appropriate situation at all. I really can't see how these officers, whose positions and equipment are funded pretty directly by Facebook, can be expected to serve the community. Even when police officers are paid by the community, they've been proven time and again to be incredibly discriminatory towards black, brown, and low-income folks in terms of that constraint of taxpayer funding and have sections of the police force be funded by a private corporation. For me, it just is the entirely wrong direction for us to be going in. I can't really believe that these officers can remain unbiased in their policing and that the source of funding for their jobs has no effect on the way in which they police and on who and what they strive to protect. So I really hope that's something that we can consider walking back on. Lastly, I just wanted to include some framing for the conversation and just the premise of it, which is that the police are here to protect and serve all of us and that that, you know, is something that can be reformed. And I know in the past, that's something I've talked about, disagreeing with that notion that the police really are here to protect and serve all of us. And my understanding that they're, they're really only here to protect and serve some of us and that they do that at the, at the expense of others of us. And yeah, as far as reforms go, I mean, all these ideas, improving use of force guidelines, limiting access to military equipment, creating community oversight, those things may help. But for me, they don't change the fact that the police will still be reinforcing inequality. So I appreciate the discussion, and I appreciate all this work. But I think if we're not discussing the role of police in upholding racial disparities and wealth inequality, we're kind of just missing the point. So thank you. Sorry for going over.
Thank you for your comment. And I had one more hand up. It looks like it was put down, but I do want to double-check. Aram James, did you want to address the city council at this time?
Who's that?
Aram James.
Yes, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I don't think it's appropriate to have a police chief who has resigned and who has a history of making racist comments about the community on a committee to consider the hiring of the next police chief or to engage in developing police practices. I think that needs to be left to who you all select as the next interim police chief. And in reference to the hiring process, it has to be a transparent process. You have to have three or four good candidates, hopefully several African-American candidates for police chief. And the candidates have to be subject to public vetting, questions that are put to them by members of the public. So the public is going to have to deal with the police if we're going to have them at all, if we're not going to defund the police department. So and I also want to suggest that the people that control this discussion need to include members of the communities who have been victims of police violence in the last few years. Why shouldn't those folks who've been most directly impacted be part of the process, including the questioning process? So those are things that I think really need to be addressed. The timeframe that you've suggested from July to September seems to me to be a setup, a rush to judgment, so that we're going to get more of the same police leadership. Certainly, my guess would be Bertini is going to want somebody put in his place that is models his view on police practices when, when in fact, we need to go in other directions. I also didn't see anything in your proposal about belving tasers, taking a good look at how often they're used and who they're used on, and why. That would be a big savings if you went in in that direction. Also, there was a suggestion by one of the other speakers. There should be an opportunity to have an alternative report other than just the staff's report, where we bring in people like Paul Butler, who wrote Chokehold, possibly Brian Stevenson, possibly Angela Davis, not the one you're thinking about probably, but Angela J. Davis, who's written a book, is former public defender in Washington, D.C., now a law professor in D.C., but has written the book, Arbitratory Justice: The Power of the American Prosecutor. Because I'll tell you, unless we have an effective prosecutor, elected prosecutor, who's willing to prosecute bad police officers, we're never going to solve the problem. So let's carry on this conversation in an authentic, principled manner. We've got to either defund the police altogether and start rehiring from the beginning or be authentic about how large this problem is. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. And at this time, I see no further hands raised. So Mayor Taylor, we can return the meeting to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and I appreciate all of the public comments. I know that it is late, and it has already been a long council meeting, but it is important for the council to hear the public, the public's perspective on items on our agenda, um, even if those topics are, um, are, are difficult to discuss. And, um, there was a comment by, um, I'm not sure who made the comment, just about the, the title of our, of the agenda item, um, institutionalized biases. Um, I agree, um, that it actually should read institutionalized racism. I know it is a, a, a difficult topic, um, and uncomfortable for people to hear, um, or to talk about. Um, but it definitely, um, is necessary in Menlo Park at this time. And, um, and we have a, a great opportunity. Um, this council has been welcome to, uh, whatever has come on our plates, um, since we've been in office. And so I'm, I'm really looking forward to, um, having this discussion, um, even though it's, it's, it is late. Um, I just wanted to check with the rest of the council to find out if you had any um, follow-up questions or comments, um, regarding public comment or even, um, with staff's, um, presentation. And Councilmember Mueller.
Just in response to the, uh, question of whether or not, uh, lip service for my discussion about the Facebook agreement. It's not, and I also would point out to the speaker, uh, there's never been a motion made at council by anyone to stop that payment. I think right now councils, and it's not like anyone in councils blocked the motion to end that payment. Uh, I think right now council is trying to figure out what to do with that respect. And so, uh, I, I, I raised that issue in good faith, trying to figure out how we can do that, but there's never been, uh, to my knowledge, a, a motion to end that. Uh, and I think we're trying to figure out now how to rededicate those funds.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so, um, fairly extensive staff report. First, I, I want to, you know, thank, thank staff for, for that report. It was um, very thorough and it was, you know, information gathered across a lot of meetings and across a number of months. And, and I think that the staff did a, a good, a good job of, of, uh, consolidating um, all, all of the issues that, um, we were talking about before, uh, uh, recent events and, and those that we have, have continued to talk about in light of, of, of recent events that have shown a light on, on, uh, our approach across the nation to, to policing and, and the specific impact that that has had on historically and currently on, on, on people of color. Um, so I, I think it was, was a, a solid staff reporting, a good foundation and a good direction as to how we can, you know, be, begin to address this and, and, you know, begin to, um, uh, to, to, to look to, um, uh, addressing and, and taking on the, the challenges, the very specific challenges we, we have in this community, one of which being, um, uh, obviously finding, uh, a, a permanent, a, a permanent police chief. Um, so, uh, again, I'm, 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 you know, uh, in, in supportive of the direction that, that staff has provided and and, and I, you know, I, I respect, uh, the public comments. Um, but, but I do think that this is, this is not lip service. What, what I see is, is an opportunity. I, I, I think it's a real and genuine opportunity. Um, and, and a, along this way, I think there are things we will, we will agree with and, and there are things we, we, we won't agree with. Um, or there won't be agreement on both between us as a council and, and, and between, uh, members of, of, of the community. Uh, but, uh, yeah, I, I, again, I, I just like to say, I think that this is, this is the, the right opportunity. This is a, a real opportunity and this is a right, um, you, you know, right direction. And, and again, I, I think we will address all of these things in, in due time. Um, again, if we, we bring up so- something like the community response be, forthbe, um, it has been something that I have been, uh, you know, had concerns about for, for a while, the, the concentration of policing and, and, and I know, uh, in, in one district, one area of, of, of the city. Um, uh, but, uh, there, there were some reasons, right? Um, valid reasons for, for how that was constructed and created. And so as we go looking at like how we can, can do that differently, um, I think that those are things that, that take time. Um, and, and can't just be done, done, done overnight. But, but again, again, that's something that, that I have been supportive of, uh, looking at how we, we concentrate police, police resources uh, with, with, within the city. Uh, but I believe that this, this direction and, and the staff report, um, uh, lays the foundation for, for, for again, like how we can, we can take all of these things on, um, in, in, in due, in due time. Um, but, but again, I, 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 I think what we have in, in, um, our, our police department is, is, is not something that, um, I would say there needs to be like wholesale change. Um, or, and, and I certainly would be very public in, in saying that I don't subscribe to this, uh, to defunding as, as the way forward. Um, uh, but certainly reform, certainly change, and, and, and I think that that's, that's the journey we, we've started.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. I just wanted to check in, uh, with Councilmember Carlton since we um, cannot see her, but I believe she is, um, not on mute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So, um, I mentioned earlier that I was on the environmental uh, legislative committee for the California League of Cities. Um, also on the Public Safety Legislative Committee, and that's what I'm doing this year in particular. And what we do is we basically track bills on certain topics. And, um, the bills listed in the, um, staff report weren't completely correct, but they were close. And the, often the person who is voting, the, the, whether it be, uh, assembly member or the state senator, they do look at the back of the report. They do seriously consider who is in support or against bills. And so a letter from us really can make a big difference. Um, I mean, there's, there's so much you find out as, as my, particularly my newer colleagues will attest to, where it just seems like an obvious thing you should be able to do and there's some law or some restriction that prevents you from doing it. You'd think we would be able to, uh, hire and fire, uh, people a lot easier than is the reality. You'd think we would be able to see, uh, people's past when we're hiring them and that transparency uh, is not there. And some of these bills are addressing that. And I can't imagine any police officer being against this because it's just transparency. You know, if you have a, a great background, you'd, you'd want to share that with, uh, another agency that may be hiring you. So for example, Bradford's SB thirteen ninety-two, um, talks about, um, uh, it's actually, it's listed as thirteen ninety-two. It's actually seven thirty-one, uh, which, uh, allows, uh, the bill would disqualify a person from being employed as a police, as a peace officer if that person has been convicted of, and then it's got a list of the different crimes. A lot of these you look at and you think, wow, seriously? That's not already a, the law? Um, but it's not. And so this bill basically authorizes the commission to revoke, uh, someone's ability to be a police officer under, under, if they've been found guilty of certain crimes. Uh, Nancy Skinner's, uh, SB seven six six aims to expand police transparency across the state. Um, so that people, uh, don't leave in bad standing from one jurisdiction and go to another, as I think one of the speaker talked about. And this is passed the Senate and it's heading, heading to the Assembly for their review vote, and it would be really good if we wanted to support that so we have transparency on people's backgrounds. SB seven seven three would reform California's police system so that calls associated with mental health, homelessness, drug overdoses don't necessarily require police intervention. There are other people that could become, um, uh, could be called instead. Uh, the, these three bills in particular that talk about transparency, about uh, when the police necessarily need to become involved and, uh, what, uh, recourse can happen if a police, uh, does certain crimes. And the, the crimes are, are, uh, uh, pretty serious. There are excessive use of force, sexual assault, making false arrests, things like that. So I would be really happy if we would support these bills, just writing a letter. Um, I'm tracking them anyway, so I'm happy to report back to everyone how the bills evolve because they give us as a jurisdiction and this, they also give, uh, people in general, uh, better transparency and, and a, and better ability to hire the best police possible, uh, for their community. So I just wanted to, to throw that out there. Since it was in the staff report, I support, uh, us, uh, basically letting Mayor Taylor, uh, write a letter. And if Mayor Taylor would like, um, we may have, uh, sample letters that are already put together, uh, by the California League of City, if these are things that we would like to, to support. Because it's not just changes at the city level. We also need to support changes, uh, and reform of the police, uh, all the way up the chain.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I apologize, Mayor. I, I didn't realize that we were gonna do a full discussion of the staff report. I thought we were just gonna do some basic discussion of public comment. And so I just want to clarify now, did, did you want us to take? Did you want us to provide comment on the staff report and initial comments? Or do you, are we gonna continue this conversation in the next meeting? Because, I mean, in short, I can summarize, I'm in. Like I, we have, we have work to do, but to get into detailed discussion of the staff report, um, happy to do that now, but also I want to be respectful of how you want to run the meeting.
Um, thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Uh, the, the first part was making sure that I allowed for public comment because people have been waiting, um, for so long. And, um, and also, um, being mindful of time. Um, this is a topic that needed to be on a meeting by itself, uh, to allow, you know, three or four hour discussion or whatever amount of time is needed. Um, however, we're, we're in this moment, um, so I didn't want to lose that moment. Um, but I wanted to check in with the rest of the council to see how they felt.
Welcome to the webinar. You have entered as an attendee in Listen Only.
It's already, um, I believe it's ten thirty. Um, so I just wanted to check in with everyone about how you feel, um, about how to move forward.
Okay. So what I would say is that, uh, my takeaway from where we've gotten to is that, uh, every Menlo Park resident deserves a public safety system that they feel comfortable interacting regardless of race and so, or socioeconomic background. And that is, uh, basically where we've gotten to today is, I'm not sure that we've gotten there yet. As a matter of fact, I'm pretty sure we haven't gotten there yet based on the feedback that we've gotten, that there are some, uh, that there are some in our community who aren't completely comfortable interacting with the police department. And that's something that we have to work on to fix and that requires, uh, that requires and everyone rolling up their sleeves and tearing down both, uh, internal institutional biases, but also looking at how we do service delivery uh, as well. And, um, so, but I also think, you know, we do a lot of talking about on council about, uh, you know, we want professional staff to do some things. Uh, but I also think, and I have learned through this process, that it also starts with us. Like, just internally, as council members, we have to be willing to go through this process as well and look at our own, uh, look at our, how we also do these things and, uh, and tear those apart too. So I'm in on that. I think it's an important conversation. I really appreciate you bringing it to the council and the work that you've done on highlighting that. And I think that, uh, I look forward to the conversation with the community uh, on Thursday to deeper dive in, but I think it's, I think that I, there's a recognition, I want to make clear my part, that Thursday is just the beginning of a conversation about how we do that. This is gonna be ongoing, uh, an ongoing body of work that's gonna require transparency and metrics and honest commitment too. And I believe very strongly, both from the staff report and also in interacting with professional staff members of the community, that our community is ready to go through that together and really approach that, uh, with the best, uh, best intentions possible so that we come together as a stronger community through that. And so I'm excited about that. Um, and I'm, I'm grateful that we go ahead and, and we start that process. Um, and I want to, and I do want to say to the community, uh, I expect that this is gonna be, uh, this is not always gonna be an easy conversation. So remember to be, uh, compassionate with each other as we go through it. Uh, because everyone's gonna come, to come, to come along at different, at different speeds. So, uh, but looking forward to talk, start having that conversation deeper on Thursday.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. And it's nice to see you again, Councilmember Carlton. Glad your internet is working better.
My internet came back up, so at least I can draw the end.
Councilmember Nash, did you have any input? How far did you want to go in conversation this evening? Or did you want to just, um, go ahead and continue to have this discussion on Thursday?
I actually think it, um, it would be worthwhile continuing the discussion on Thursday and really being able to, um, discuss issues, uh, in, in, with a fresh mind and, um, being able to really take the time to to get into issues. So, um, yeah, actually, I, I will leave it at that.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Nash. And, um, I'm not even sure where to start with, uh, my thoughts. Um, I, I am very grateful, um, to be, um, not just to be a part of this discussion, but to be um, the elected official, one of the elected officials in this discussion. It is long overdue, um, in my opinion. And it is, we have to be doing better, um, especially, um, with our youth watching us. Um, I, I have a letter that I want to read because I, it was, it was hard to believe that this came from an eight, nine, and a ten-year-old. Um, "Dear Mayor Taylor, we are a group of cousins who live in Menlo Park and go to Oak Knoll and Hillview, and we really care about racial justice. We are doing our best to help with it. And that includes writing this letter to you because you have more say at this. We started a summer project where we all, where, where we are all going to discuss and work towards racial justice. Today, we watched a TED Talk by Megan Francis about racism and how it affected her and her family. It made us think about our own city and how we can help. We have put together some ideas and questions for you about police and some about racism in Menlo Park. For Menlo Park Police, do they have body cameras? Are they required to turn them on when they call, when they get a call? Do Menlo Park Police have evidence-based de-escalation and/or racial justice training? Do you find that black police officers get treated differently than white police officers? What happens to police who are accused of misconduct? Is there a record of the accusations? Are police required to file a report when a police officer fires a gun? Are there businesses in Menlo Park who discriminate based on race? If so, what do you do about it? Do gender and race connect? If so, how? We would like to hear your answers to these questions and we hope you will consider following up on the answers of our questions and implementing some of these policies. All in all, we think you are an amazing mayor and hope to see what you do to help with racial justice. We'll try our best to keep helping out too." So for me, even though this is a painful process for me to go through, having a letter like that from our youth, how can we not do better? We know something is wrong with our system. And if we sit here and say that it isn't, then we're not paying attention. We're in denial. But our job as policymakers are to dig in, just like Councilmember Mueller said. It's our job. And so I appreciate having this position. And so I appreciate having this position, and I hope that I can open my heart and mind just as much as I'm expecting everybody else to. But it is going to be a struggle. It is going to take time, and we just have to remember that we are all human, we all feel, we all have opinions, and we all need to learn. And that's where I am in this moment. I have about 16 points that I wanted to make this evening. I don't believe now is the time. I am grateful that we are all here, and I hope that the public that has participated in this meeting, that you can be kind with us about continuing this meeting to Thursday. I know that there is an expectation, and maybe we haven't met it, but we are trying our best to get there. And I want to thank the staff for the work that they have done to get us as far as we have with the report. Even though I had some disagreement with it, I'm glad that it is here. I'm glad that it exists. And Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson, we haven't seen you this evening, so I just wanted to check in with you about having this item on Thursday for it to come first as opposed to last, if that's possible.
Yes, of course, it's possible. We, we will definitely do that.
Okay. And, and it's nice to see you.
Yeah, good, good to see you all too.
And in, in this moment, I, I'm not sure if there is a, a council member report or a city manager report. Councilmember Carlton?
Um, although it's listed in the, the staff report, I'm wondering if it, if we have to specially agendize it to approve you sending a letter in support of those bills?
Is that a question for me or for our city manager? Oh, there we go, our interim city attorney.
Thank you. It doesn't need to be separately agendized. The intent behind the, the staff report was just to itemize a few ideas, and the thought was that there will, of course, be additional ideas proposed by the council and by community members. So I think that, that certainly is, is a reasonable suggestion and something that you can direct the, the staff to work with the mayor on.
Okay, can we, since it was there, do we vote on that now, or do we vote on it on
Either way is fine. It might be good for you and I to touch base on the particular bills. I have on my list one additional bill, and I, I'd like to talk to you about that one as well, since I, I think you have more up-to-date information on the status of all these bills than, than I do.
Sure. Yeah. I have to let you know, my father's had a stroke and then has had some continuing health issues, and so I'm going to have to go to, to Texas to deal with some family issues. So I may not be on the call Thursday, or I may be available if there's something specific you need that I can call in for a portion of that meeting. But I'm, I'm in support of, of what I've seen so far. So I'm happy to, to work with you, Kara, in the interim. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, and I just suggest, I'm appreciative, and I suggest to Councilmember Carlton and the city attorney that, to check on the Bradford bill. You're, you're right, Councilmember Carlton, since I first, since Councilmember Combs and I first raised it to the city in our request, it, it actually was, went to the Assembly. It was going to be an Assembly bill, and then came back as a separate Senate bill, and it's just moving all over the place. So I don't know what, I'm not even sure SB, S31 is the right title for it. I know there is intent in Sacramento for it to find a home and get passed. So, but it, it's a bill that I think I would, I would also support us moving forward on tonight to send a letter, so.
I, I would support that. And I spoke to, I didn't speak to, I looked it up online today, and it's at 7:31. I left a message for the staff to have, to speak to the staff member that's, that's managing the bill and haven't heard back yet. But 7:31 is, is where it's at right now, and I believe it's moving to the second house. Or it's moving, it's moving to the committees of the second house.
So I'll send you, I have the email address for that and have, had conferred with that staff member. I'll send you guys that and just put you in touch with them on that, and you guys, I think it'd be great if you guys could run with it.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I had a, a question sort of more on the, you know, logistics, logistics area. When we do revisit this item on Thursday, like, how are you, Mayor, thinking of structuring sort of this dive into this? Are we going to go like as it has been presented in the, because I know you said you had 16 things that you, you wanted to talk about. Like, are we going to sort of go and unpack the recommendations, you know, and the staff report as, as they are presented? I mean, some are, are less sort of recommendations than, you know, just reciting facts like, you know, recruit an interim police chief. Is that the way you're thinking of us approaching it? Like just sort of going through, through those recommendations? Are you thinking of, of approaching it a, a different way when we, when we revisit this?
I have two answers. One is, the different part for me has to do with, I believe there needs to be some form of expertise here, and I don't think that the council has it nor the staff. And so can we, how do you, how do we do that with the current staff report and no expertise? And so that's the piece that I'm struggling with, which is probably why I have the 16 points, which I think maybe that's what we need to be talking about now, is what is, what, what can Thursday look like? What are, what are we comfortable with? Because not having the expertise, I honestly, I'm not sure what's the best way to approach it. We all wind up having our own point of views and then figuring out how to mesh them together, and then how do we move forward with that? I'm not sure because none of us have the expertise.
Maybe we don't have the expertise, but, but we have the job.
Right.
So, so there, there's a, and, and yeah, and again, I don't, I don't know, I'm, I'm just, you know, trying to see as, as like, you know, are we trying to work to one big, and again, a lot of this is about giving, you know, direction to staff? Are we trying to work towards one holistic, you, you, you know, comprehensive listing and giving staff that direction? Or are we looking to sort of break this up and, and sort of, we'll be taking like multiple votes on, on Thursday as, as a result to sort of giving staff direction? You know, again, I'm just sort of asking as a way of, of trying to prep myself as to like sort of what, what we're, what we're aiming to achieve, or if that and the city manager can certainly come on. If, if, if staff is looking for something else, right? Are they looking for a holistic sort of recommendations? Are they looking for us to go in and sort of very specifically kind of, you know, take votes on some, some of these things? Again, I just, I just wanted to be very, very, as, as productive as possible when, when we revisit this because I think it's, it's a, a moment that many in the community, and I think we all have been waiting for a while. We, we've sort of had this, this debate sort of start and stop a number of times. And so, and so just, just want to make sure we're using the time wisely.
So if I may, Madam Mayor? I, I think the staff is looking for direction from the council on what's most important to you. I know we've heard a lot of ideas and a lot of great ideas, but we want to make sure that we're working on the ideas or towards a solution that you think best suits our organization. Now that, that could be bringing in somebody, bringing in expertise to start helping us frame the questions or, or create a framework to move forward. It doesn't have to be, I imagine that none of us think we're going to solve all the problems on Thursday night, but rather lay out a path for how to begin to approach them.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Mueller has his hand up, even though it's almost behind the camera.
Sorry, I'm going to get a little sleepy. Actually, would suggest, actually, and I am perfectly comfortable with the mayor and Vice Mayor meeting to figure out how to approach, you know, with the city manager between now and Thursday, how to approach it. So I really am not, as a council member right now in this meeting, I'm very comfortable referring to all the how to set up that conversation for, for Thursday night. I don't, I care about it very much, but I'm not, I'm not sure that right now in this moment, I particularly have a lot substantially to add to that discussion. I think I'm very comfortable with, with how, how you may want to set that up. Does that, does that make sense? Mayor Taylor?
Yes, it makes sense.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Nash, did you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. So I guess, having listened to what the conversation you just had, if you do come up with some structure for Thursday, if you can communicate that out, that would be great so that we can have it most, so it can be most effective. Because I'm actually wondering how much we're going to, you know, there's that city inequities and institutionalized bias, racism, however we want to discuss that. There's the police reform, there's the Facebook money and what if we want to do anything and what we want to do with that. There's some practice issues. For example, I'm very interested in discussing the BEATs and just some, some very basic issues that are ongoing at this point. And they're all sort of interwoven and separate, but interrelated. And so I'm just sort of, I'm trying to figure out what would be the most productive, which I think everyone is. What is the most productive way to proceed and to be able to be most prepared for the
I appreciate that feedback, Councilmember Nash, and we will do our best. And considering how many topics are interwoven just in this one staff report, we may not get through it all. We may just pick one piece. But going to what Vice Mayor Combs was talking about, the, the holistic approach, it, it's hard to take a topic like institutional racism and, and you, you divvy it up and you try to deal with each piece, but keeping it separate isn't going to work. It, we're, it's all connected. And I'm not sure, I don't have the answer to how we're going to move forward. We'll figure it out together. But the fact is, we are where we are, and there will be some progress made. And what Vice Mayor Combs and I can do is follow up with the city manager tomorrow and try to have something more concrete to you earlier in the day, so it gives you time for Thursday. But it's unrealistic to try to bring everything back on Thursday and talk about everything. I just, I, I don't see that happening. But we will do, it will do as much as we can. Maybe it's picking which topics in there are the most important. Is it the police reform and the, and the, the Facebook money? And to follow up on a question I asked, I don't know, about 10 minutes ago, are there any council member reports? And is there a city manager report?
No report tonight. I think that there's no report tonight, thank you.
Okay. And I believe after the, there's no council member report, no city manager report, I believe that we are adjourned. Is that correct? All right. Thank you all, and have a good night and get lots of sleep, please.
So real quick, Mayor Taylor, for the info item, can we continue that to the 16th as well instead of calling the public commenter this evening?
Yes, considering the hour, yes.
Okay, thank you. So yes, we are officially adjourned. I apologize for the interruption.
Thank you for the reminder.
Of course.
Okay, thank you. Good night, everyone.